Okay, thank you, Stephanie. Good morning, everyone. Please welcome us to the Deschutes County Board of Commissioners meeting on February 9th, 2020. And let's join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Father of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we now have the time for citizen input. Stephanie, is there anyone on Zoom that you see? No? We do have 41 emails regarding Royal Park to save the development of it, our park outside the door. And I will recognize that the top email is from Mike Meyer. So, thank you, Mike, and thank you, citizens. We have our consent agenda.
Move approval of consent agenda.
And I'll second the consent agenda. So, January 24th, though, it mentions Chair DeBon instead of Chair Dare, so just a little typo from the form.
Well, thank you for recognizing.
It was edited already, but it still says Chair DeBon, so I'm sure we could have that changed.
Okey-dokey. All right. Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBon?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So, first action item this morning is our public hearing. Dave?
Thank you, Commissioners. So, what you have for you today is scheduled for a public hearing. This is for the board to then consider adoption of Board Resolution 2022-006, which is a resolution which would submit to the voters of the Sun River Service District an election on a new 10-year capital improvement local option tax. That would be used to fund debt service for financing utilized to remodel and expand the Sun River Public Safety Building. You recall that the board did have a presentation during your joint meeting with the Sun River Service District back in December. Today, Police Chief Darling, Fire Chief Moore, and Managing Board Chair Hepburn are here. I don't know that they intend necessarily to put on a presentation, but they're here to answer any questions that the board might have. This would be the time for you to open the public hearing, call for any testimony, and then you could close the public hearing and take action on the resolution. I will note I placed on the desk in front of each of you documents, which is the notice of election and also the Secretary of State 803 document. And I highlighted on there some very minor language revisions that were put in at the request of the bond council that are assisting the district with some of the financing issues. Clear that with the county clerk. It didn't affect any of the technicalities that apply to that, that the clerk applies, including number counts, so it's all good to proceed. And I've made those changes on the original documents that will be presented for you folks later, Sharon has for your signature. So, this would be a time, again, to open the public hearing, call for any public testimony, and take action on Board Resolution 2022-006. Again, that would place on the ballot, the May 17th ballot, a measure that would be for the electors in the district to determine whether they wanted to approve this 10-year local option tax at 47 cents per thousand.
Okay. I'd like to open the public hearing then at this moment.
So, just a little bit of clarity, it looks like just the words "lower interest loan" or "financing agreement" were added, it looks like, for the documents.
Correct.
So, we think of it as a bond opportunity in the market at, you know, existing rates. What's the difference between a low-interest loan or financing agreement?
You know, I'm not sure in practice there's a difference, but that's what the attorneys that are representing, assisting the district on the loan process.
More opportunity.
Yeah, they just wanted to make sure. What it is ultimately, it just makes any lender even more comfortable that that debt is fully secured by this levy. And it's wordsmithing. It's, you know, the measure would have been appropriate without that, but I, you know, I trust their judgment that it makes it a little easier when they're dealing with lenders that are going to be lending the district money.
And then, just for clarity, this is a general obligation bond relative to the tax bill in the future of the residents opposed to full faith and credit of existing revenue. So, that's the big picture here.
Well, it's not a GO bond, so this is a capital improvement. So, it's not processed, it's not a GO bond per se. It's more akin to a revenue bond type of process. But, yes, obviously, the full faith and credit of the district is what lenders are going to look to when providing any loans.
Great, thank you.
And if you're, you know, concerned about the specifics of the loans itself and how they're going to be, the debt financing, I would assume the gentlemen that are here could answer any questions you might have on that.
Well, interest rates are still looking good out there. I mean, they're going up, but not this week, I don't believe. Commissioner Chang?
I just would love to hear from our board members and chiefs, a little refresher reminder on what the poll data, you did a survey or polling of Sun River residents and how you're feeling about the prospects for this bond moving forward.
Bill Hepburn, Chair of the Sun River Service District Board. We have not done any formal polling, but we've done a lot of community outreach, starting in July, is when we started with our first article in the Sun River Scene, a number of public meetings, both in person and on Zoom. We've had at least six or seven tours of the facilities to let people actually come in and see them. So, while we haven't had any polling, we really haven't heard any real opposition to the project. You know, the Sun River homeowners are quick to state their opinions in the monthly Sun River Scene, you know, and we haven't seen any of those negative comments or, you know, people have questions, of course, but so far, we really haven't seen any organized opposition to this yet. Of course, you know, it's not over till it's over, so we're going to start planning tomorrow, based on your vote today, on what our next communication steps are between now and May 17th. So, that's going to be our number-one priority, probably starting about 10 o'clock this morning.
Very good. Can you give a sense of, you know, through tours, through public meetings, through other kinds of engagement, do you have a sense of how many people you've come in contact with about the, you know, about this proposal?
In person, I would say we're close to 200, you know, in various forums over the last three or four months.
That's great.
And, you know, the Sun River Scene is widely read by Sun River homeowners also, so I think we've reached a pretty broad audience so far.
Good to know, thank you.
So, point of order, are we doing this as the governing body of?
You are. This hearing is being conducted as the governing body for the Sun River Service District, and the resolution is signed as the governing body for the Sun River Service.
So, we're convened as?
Right, that's what I was thinking that we needed to be doing, so.
Yeah, you're by default convening as such, but, yes, you are sitting as the governing body for the Sun River Service District at this point for this hearing.
Okay. So, is there any other additional discussion?
I do have one more question. So, in the, in this description, the anticipated impact of a levy on a $400,000 assessed value home would be, you know, something in the range of $188 a year. Is that, is $400,000 assessed value, is that kind of like the median or the average in Sun River, or?
I think that's a very good median. I mean, you know, assessed valuations, on my street, the assessed valuations go from 1.1 million to 290,000, so it's, you know, it's hard to get a, hard to find a good, you know, median or mean, but 400,000, I think, is a very good middle point, you know, for both, for both of those modes to look at. So, I think the majority of Sun River homeowners will probably pay $200 or less per year for this levy.
Great, thank you.
And then, the tax assessed value will be probably less than the market value at this point in time.
Yes.
So, that's what's on the tax bill, so that makes sense.
That is the good news.
Yep.
If you're a homeowner.
Yes.
So, is there any other further discussion?
I'll just acknowledge this is a partnership, you know, being the governing body as a Board of Commissioners with the management board, you know, so we have one representative, but really, there's multiple representatives on that management board, which are community members. So, thank you very much for the outreach and the efforts of, you know, direct tours of the facilities and the documents prepared to show us what we're stepping into and what could be built.
Well, there's a tour at 1:00 this afternoon.
Oh, there you go.
Here in the neighborhood.
There, okay.
Okay, well, perhaps. 1:00 PM, okay, today.
Good to know.
If anyone in the community is listening and they want a tour, it's today at 1:00. So, that's nice to know. Maybe that'll be one of your first events after we have a vote. So, if I, I should need to close the hearing then? Okay. I feel it's a good time to close the hearing. Is anyone else?
So, just another statement, you know, the partnership is strong. We were able to commit the unallocated transient room tax dollars as the other part of this big financial package, which is just a big step forward, I know. So, it truly is a partnership with the community. The need has been justified, the vision has been put out there, so I'm real excited to support this.
Yes, so am I. I feel like Sun River has been a major contributor for decades. It is a world-class, recognized community. Your reputation always brings more people into Central Oregon, and I so appreciate that. So, I'm glad that we can do something in order to acknowledge your patience of actually putting something together that's going to work for both fire and police. I think it's really important that you're going to be able to upgrade, and it is unbelievable the patience that you have used for the last, since, what, '93? Amazing.
Excellent project that will provide so many benefits for the Sun River community. Thank you for spearheading it, and very excited about the county's partnership and excited to help put it before the voters.
Thank you.
So, is there a motion?
So, I'll move approval and signature on Resolution 2022-006, submitting to the voters in the Sun River Service District an election on a new 10-year capital improvement local option tax to fund debt service for financing utilized to remodel and expand the Sun River Public Safety Building.
And I will second it.
Any further discussion? Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBon?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes.
I want to thank the Board of Commissioners, like Commissioner DeBon said, it's been a great partnership doing this. And I also want to thank David Doyle and Greg Munn and their staffs for all the work and guidance that they provided us to get us to this point rather quickly. So, I know we'll be dealing with those two again, but I want to thank them publicly for their help.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And don't forget, Happy Valentine's Day.
It's coming.
Monday, it's kind of unusual. Thank you.
So, now the board will reconvene as?
Yes, we will reconvene as Deschutes County Commissioners. Thank you very much. Thank you, Dave Doyle. So, we have now item number 10 on our agenda, and it looks like we have an award. Whitney, are you going to do that?
I am. Good morning, Commissioners, for the record. Whitney Hale, Administrative Services. I'm joined by Jessica Campbell, Administrative Analyst from Facilities. Lee Randall unexpectedly had to attend to a family matter, so Jessica and I are going to cover items 10 and 11 with you this morning. I'll kind of give a general overview of both items, and Jessica will be available to answer any questions that you may have, or at least we'll try to do that today with Lee's absence. Item number 10, we are seeking board approval of document number 2022-183, which is a notice of intent to award contract to SunWest Builders for the North County Campus Project. This project was publicly advertised. We had a request for proposals that went out for a CMGC. Five firms responded, and three of those firms went on to the interview round. SunWest was the highest-scoring firm in the interview round and was selected by a committee made up of staff from Facilities, Health Services, and the design team. This would be an initial contract for pre-construction services for $21,000, and again, would be for the North County Campus at 236 and 244 Kingwood Avenue in Redmond, which, as the board knows, are sites that would house health services, as well as potentially a variety of other county departments at that location. So, with that, I don't know if the board has any questions related to this request.
I'll just acknowledge I'm excited that we're moving this forward. You know, those buildings have been purchased, it's time to do the tenant improvements and, you know, the development appropriate for our county services. It's going to be a great home for our services for many, many years, being able to expand, you know, just the footprint and the floor space for those services for the residents of, all residents of the county, but based in Redmond, obviously. Yeah, no other?
No, no questions. It's a great project.
Yeah, I'll move Chair's signature of document number 2022-183, Notice of Intent to Award Contract to SunWest Builders for the North County Campus Project.
Second.
Any further discussion? I just want to thank Jessica, you for coming in this morning and being here available in case we did have any questions for you.
We'll ask you a tough question on the next one, maybe.
Yes. Okay, let's see. Commissioner DeBon?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes.
Thank you.
So, now we have item number 11. Whitney?
All right, thank you, Commissioners. Item number 11 is seeking approval of document number 2022-162, which is a CMGC findings of fact for the Deschutes County Courthouse Expansion Project. This is, if you'll recall, the same process that Lee came to you about six weeks ago for the North County Campus Project, so we're kind of starting at the beginning of the courthouse project. This findings of fact allows us to proceed with the CMGC model contracting for this project, and the finding of fact establishes the basis for using that model contracting. You know, due to current market conditions and labor shortages, the Facilities Department is recommending use of this model at this time for the project, and seeking board approval based on the attached findings of fact. There aren't budget impacts at this time, but if approved, we would obviously use this method to select a CMGC, which would participate in project design for the courthouse project, and solicit competitive bid for subcontractor scopes of work. So, you know that you did mention you may have a hard question for Jessica, but any questions related to this request?
Maybe explain the difference between if we do go down the path of CMGC or design, bid, build, too, because that's kind of the other option here.
Yeah, Jessica, do you want to take that one, or do you want me to take that one?
I'll defer to you.
Okay, Whitney, there you go, you're on.
I was trying there. I took it.
Perfect. Well, yes, Commissioner DeBon, as you mentioned, design, bid, build would be the other option that we would pursue. And if you look at the findings of fact that's included in the board's packet today, there's some great reasons why Facilities is recommending that we go the CMGC route for this project. One of those is that we have construction expertise early on in the project as we're scoping design. The other, we can ensure that we have a maximum price established for the project, and so just really reducing some variability that might exist within the design, bid, build model. Also, value engineering is another one of the elements that's kind of outlined within the findings of fact that the board has before today, so if that gives you what you were hoping for.
Well, yeah, so just acknowledging, it was already mentioned that the integration with the existing facilities is a little tricky, too, just the heating and electrical and plumbing and just, you know, it's not creating just a new box of a building, but it's integrating it to an existing building. So, having that partner up front and long-term is going to be very valuable for this project.
Yes, you always know remodeling and joining things together sometimes can be way more difficult than, yes, building a, let's say, a brand-new house. So, it is, we can understand. This is so critical, our judges have already started, and that's the good news. Commissioner Chang, did you have anything?
No, no questions.
Okay, so we have a motion?
I move approval of document number 2022-162, Construction Manager, General Contractor, Findings of Fact for the Deschutes County Courthouse Expansion Project.
And I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBon?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Whitney, thank you, Jessica.
Thank you.
Okay, we have item number 12. Trevor, Michelle?
Good morning, Commissioners. It's actually today for this item, this is DV Holcomb with Community Justice, along with Michelle Winters from Juvenile Community Justice. Trevor is on jury duty today, so we are going to be with you. Yes, good for him. So, thank you very much. This item today is requesting review and signature on intragovernmental agreement 14815. That's Deschutes County Doc 22-167. If you have reviewed the materials, you'll know that recently, January 1st, 2022, Senate Bill 575 came into effect. That made some big changes to juvenile expulsion law. So, basically, the brief here is that for many, many juvenile referrals, referrals that young people get that are referred to our department, if they are not adjudicated, so if they're dismissed, if they never went to court, or if they went to court but then were dismissed, are going to now be automatically expunged. In the past, individuals always had to request that their records were expunged, and that was a somewhat lengthy bureaucratic process. In this case, for this set of referrals and crime types, records will be automatically expunged. Very rarely and wonderfully, the state did not make this an unfunded mandate on our part, because you can imagine it kind of increased our administrative needs to, I guess I should say, our time, the administrative time spent on expulsion is going to increase as a result of this. So, this IGA is supporting counties like ours at the tune of about $206 per expulsion to do that extra work. That will come to us on an invoice basis, I think on a quarterly basis, after we're finished. We'll provide documentation of records or the number of records that were expunged, and the state will then reimburse us at that rate. So, that's it, unless you have any specific questions about the law or the process, we would seek your review and signature.
DV, I have a question. You said that you did 20 in the month of January. Are these ones that you just, are you working backwards? I mean, do you work backwards? Where did those 20 come from? Or were those youth that were actually from the month of January?
Yeah, thank you, great question. So, the bill is not retroactive. It is basically in place for all people turning 18 on or after January 1st, 2022. So, the 20 that we saw in January, we get this automatic report that's provided to us from the state that says, oh, there's a youth in your system from Deschutes County, they just turned 18, like, today. And then, that sort of prompts, that starts the clock ticking for Michelle and her team to start the expulsion process. So, we had 20 youth in the month of January who, at some point before they were 18, had a record in our system, turned 18, and now became eligible. And we anticipate, again, it's quite new, we're not quite, you know, sure how many we'll have, but at this point, based on January's data, we're looking at maybe 20 to 30 per month.
Thank you for that. I was just, I was wondering, so it's actually, you're being told by the state, and they have the system, and it's when they're 18, then it'll go, you'll be notified?
Yes, exactly.
Great, okay, that was a great simplification. Thank you. Any other questions?
DV, can you, can you kind of describe for us what this does for a youth to have their record expunged? Is that the right word? Expunged?
Yeah, expunged.
Expunged. You know, in terms of being able to move forward, you know, hitting your 18th birthday and being able to move forward without this record, like, what are some of the ways that this might be a benefit to someone?
Yeah, great question. And Michelle, feel free to jump in if you have an addition, but it can be very important to young people, and I guess there's a couple of different reasons why. One is that, if you recall, these records that are coming into this new law are records where the case really didn't go anywhere, right? It was like a referral, maybe by law enforcement to our department, but it didn't go anywhere, certainly didn't go to court. At the most, it might have been an informal supervision or diversion kind of supervision, right? So, for many people, young people, they forget that this really happened, or they think that they did this diversion, they did what they were supposed to do, and now they're good to go, right? But then, later on in their lives, they apply for a job, particularly with a government or the military, and up pops something on their background check that they didn't even know they had. So, then, you know, here they're in a situation where they may have reported that they don't have anything to report, something pops up, and then they're in this position of having to explain, you know, why or why not that they realized that. So, again, you know, sometimes, so that's one issue, so they're just going to avoid that. That literally will be gone.
Right.
The second kind of interesting area is, and this is, it's not always an easy thing, and I don't know if you all maybe saw that a bulletin reporter was interested in this and wrote a story a couple of weeks ago about this dynamic. Lots of times, young people will report that they had interaction with law enforcement. And then, sometimes, when the, like, for example, the military will come and say, oh, the youth reported they had something, and we say, oh, there's nothing there. Then it puts that youth in a really interesting position where, you know, they have to now talk with their recruiter, who then talks with us, and we are, you know, by law, that event never occurred. I mean, the youth has the right to state that the event never occurred once it's expunged, and we, of course, have no right to, even if we could remember, we have no right to agree or disagree or confirm or not confirm whether the incident occurred. So, it's a really interesting, it is complicated, but in general, I think that because these referrals that we're talking about never went to the state of a formal supervision, it really does reflect that the young person had a blip, did what they needed to do, and were able to move on with their life, and it's not going to follow them for the rest of their lives or their first or second, you know, job recruitment.
Right, great, thank you. That was very helpful.
And in the memo, it talks about juvenile records relating to contact that did not result in referral to juvenile court. So, that's really kind of the line that would happen there. So, if there ends up being a court case and, you know, more legal at that point, that's a line that would trigger having these not expunged, is that correct?
Yeah, not automatically expunged. The law did not change every single youth's right to request expulsion, but again, that would be a request to the juvenile court, and then there's a number- And then there's a number of statutory requirements that have to be met, which, by the way, these, these young people that we're talking about with this change also have to have not just had that one blip and then be good, but be good for the rest of the time. They can't have an open case. They can't have had another case that maybe went to a petition or to a court referral, right? They need to have had really no more contact whatsoever after that one initial referral that gets them into this pool.
So then if there is court activity, it would be up to the court. There could be a request, and it would be up to the court at that point in time.
Correct.
Got it.
Okay.
Good to understand.
All right, is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll move approval of authorization for chair signature under Deschutes County's document number 2022-167 for youth authority of expungement of juvenile records.
Second.
Any other discussion? Mr. DeBonne?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Thanks, D.V.
Thank you. Have a great day. Thanks, Michelle.
Thank you. Okay. We have item number 13.
We're rolling half hour early now.
Well, the roll will stop.
It's coming.
It will stop. We know it's going to stop. It always does. So let's, anyway, yes.
Exit.
Yes. Okay.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I'm Cheryl Smallman. I'm Officer for Health Services, and I'm joined by Dan Emerson, Business Manager with Finance, as well as Shayna Faub, who I believe is here. She's the Community Health Specialist with Public Health. We're here in front of you today for consideration of chair signature of document number 2022-161, which is Amendment Number Two to the Oregon Health Authority Agreement Number 170124. These are federal Emergency Management Agency, or FEMA, dollars that are routed to Deschutes County through Oregon Health Authority to support public health COVID-19 response, or countywide COVID-19 response. We do already have a contract with Oregon Health Authority, so this increases our not-to-exceed amount from 2.4 million to 3 million 70,000. It goes through April 1st of 2022, and it is specifically to support vaccine-related events and outreach. And if approved, there will be an item immediately following this that would be a resolution to increase appropriation to the Health Services Fund.
Yes, item number 14.
Questions?
Oh, any questions here?
I'd just acknowledge that, you know, we do have all these services, the vaccine outreach and the vaccinators, and then the efforts that we're doing, you know, the proposed budget as percentage sure, you know, allocates it down to the, to line items there, which is really good. We're, we're on a, you know, some history of providing this service and having these extra resources. This is going to help, looks like, to be expended by April 1st this year. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yes.
I would just say, I am so appreciative that the federal government continues to be an important partner for us in doing this work and allowing us to make vaccination accessible and easily available to our community.
Great. With that, I'll move chair signature of document 2022-161, Amendment Number Two to the OHA Agreement 170124.
Dash two?
Is that going to, yeah.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Mr. DeBonne?
Yes.
Mr. Chang?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Thank you, Cheryl. So Cheryl, now you have item number 14.
I'll hand the sign off to Dan.
Okay, thank you.
And directly following that is just a resolution approving the funds and increasing appropriations in the Health Services Budget.
I'll move approval of Resolution 2022-011, Accepting Funds and Increasing Appropriations in the Health Services Budget.
And I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Mr. DeBonne?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Thank you, Dan.
Hey.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, so now, we're at the American Rescue Plan Funding Update. I, I guess we're early?
Yeah.
Well, Dan's there. Dan, are you going to take this, or is Greg coming?
I think Greg, Eric, Greg is going to. I'll reach out to him right now, but I think we're just running a little early today, which is great.
Well, trust me, it won't last. We've got a, we've got a lot of other items.
I did. I just let, I just let Greg know.
Okay.
Yeah, and we, and we have a lot of ARPA requests to consider today, too, so it's good to have some time.
I can provide another item just for the, for the minutes. I was able to attend the Association of Oregon Counties Board Meeting in person down at the fairgrounds in coordination with the Oregon Fair Association Annual Meeting. So that's, that was a great opportunity. The AOC meeting was in a nice, large room at the fairgrounds, so we were spread out real big in the room. And, you know, a lot of folks dialed in also. I think, you know, my other commissioners were probably on that call. So it's just a great opportunity to, you know, see some of the other commissioners in person. I was able to go to the state Capitol, see some of the legislators. You know, there were no floor sessions at that time, so I was able to see a few folks in person showing support for this legislative session. You know, I mentioned that, you know, if there's opportunities to discuss a, you know, the camping opportunities. And it was just a, kind of the generic statement I got to tell a few people that, you know, land use associated with camping may be a topic, at least for Deschutes County, that we're going to be advocating for. So as I say, we know from our legislative discussions that, you know, finding a vehicle and seeing if it could really be put in any kind of legislation is, is an unknown at this time, but I was able to mention it to a few of the legislators.
Good. Greg, we're running early. Thank you so much for joining us.
Good morning, Commissioners. Greg Munn, County Finance. And today on our ARPA agenda, our ARPA date, we have a couple of subtopics that will have a few folks joining us today. So the first one is we'll have an update discussion on the Council of Aging proposal, which is in your packet. COIC will provide another update on the status of their business assistance project, where they're at with that. Health Services, I believe Eric will be providing an update on the Health Service non-core COVID recovery temporary staff request. And then we'll also have a follow-up from South County, from Charla and Courtney, from the South County Health Center update. Additionally, in addition to that, we have, of course, the project list, which is included in your packet for consideration. And we want to make sure we touch on signing authority. Also want to bring up, which is not related to ARPA, but signing authority for the TRT grants. We want to make sure we cover that. And then also, just quickly let you know that the $82,000 the board approved back in June for the mobile morgue.
Oh, I was going to ask if we could sell it.
We didn't, OHA stepped in and funded that purchase. So the $82,000 that the board committed back, it was either, I think it was in June, for that project can now be repurposed on, on the list here. But I want to make sure I covered that with you as well, so.
That is amazing. I wrote it down, could we sell it, last, when I was reading this? I thought.
Yeah, so I've confirmed that.
Did we need to buy that? I don't think so.
Yep. I've confirmed with St. Charles and with Nathan, and what they're working on right now is just where to keep it, so.
And I heard maybe the sheriff's office may be
Yeah.
the home for that.
Okay, well, as long as it's not out of our ARPA funds.
So, so Nathan is, Nathan is working on retaining that, that piece of equipment?
Yes, yeah. So there'll be, so the question is, is where to actually physically keep it so it can be employed.
And then is that titled ownership by the hospital system or the sheriff's office? Do we know that?
I'm not sure about that.
Because I think it was the hospitals, the hospital was going to step in.
Believe the hospital's still going to own it. OHA funded it, and we will keep and maintain it.
Yeah.
I think that's the direction we're going.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so with that, I'll see if either Steve, Stephen Remington, or Susan Rotella is on the line.
It's pretty early.
How about Scott Acock? We are a little early on the agenda.
Really, really.
Scott?
Okay.
Great. Good morning, Scott.
Good morning.
Scott Acock, Community Economic Development Director for COIC. I'm actually waiting on one last piece of information, but we did learn from last time to be prepared a little early. So here we are. I'll be able to share what I can. There's one more piece coming in. So as a reminder to anybody who is, who doesn't know what we're doing, this is a, an update on the Small Business and Nonprofit COVID Response Grant Program that we're administering right now. You know, the application is closed back in January. We are going through the process of reviewing all the applications. So this is just kind of a quick update on the process. Some forecasts of the total eligible, excuse me, total eligible amount that could be awarded, and some scenarios to frankly reduce that amount to what's, you know, more available, as well as our staffing costs. So that's where we're at. I'm just looking to see. No, I have not gotten my updated thing. So I'm gonna go ahead and screen share something to give a summary of where we're at. Okay, so is this, can you see this?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. So where we're at is we have now reviewed 200 of the 290 or so applications using the methodology that we put together, which was essentially the net change in profit or additional costs that can be, at least as far as we can tell, attributed to COVID, looking at 2019 financials for these businesses and nonprofits, comparing them to 2020 and 2021. And then, then, after we've figured out that net impact, we are subtracting from their eligible amount, amounts already received from other grant programs. So prior Deschutes County grant programs, prior state administer grant programs, as well as several programs. And so when we look at those 200 applications, we have up to 5.6 million would be eligible for funding. So what, you know, what we've heard is that there's at least a, a set aside of about 1.5 million in funding for this program, which equates to 26%, 26.7% or 6% of the eligible amount, or, excuse me, the available amount. And the average eligible amount is currently at about $83,000 per applicant. So let me just really quickly see, okay, do you have it? So if we were to forecast the remaining, what will happen with the remaining 90 applications, we now project a total eligible amount of 8.2 million. So this 5.6 would go up to 8.2. And, and, and so I will go ahead and go eight, I'm going to do this, and just do this in real time, and come up with a new percentage. Equals... Oh, won't let me do that. Okay, that didn't work. I'll have to do it later. Oh, yeah, 18%. So we are, the scenarios that we have run, one would be applying the, this percentage to every eligible amount. So for every applicant, we would apply, in this case, the way these numbers are run currently, it's on this, this former forecast of 26.61%. So if everyone got 26.61% of what they would be eligible to receive, that would add up to 1.5 million or so. The other way we could do it is just put a cap. So everyone gets 100% of what they're eligible to receive, up to $33,000. That was the magic number that got us to 1.5 million. So these are just two of several scenarios that we could employ. One is just a straight proportional approach. The other is putting a cap, which, of course, the first is kind of fair, everyone's treated exactly the same, no matter what their size and scale is. And the second, you are essentially making the smaller businesses more whole than the larger businesses, because there's this cap. So I wanted to just sort of pause there. I'll stop the share for a sec, and just see if you have any comments or feedback or questions to this point.
So one of the thoughts is, we may be able to, you know, just bump that number up 1.5 to give a little bit larger pool. I don't know what the appetite is for that, but.
No, when I look at the millions we've spent on some things, and I think about our businesses, and I think we truly should have had a bigger number there. I mean, we knew when we gave out, what, 2.4 million, that we didn't have enough, what, first year of COVID, December of 2020, it was really too small. So, yeah, if we can move some more money over, I think that would be important. There are still people in our community that they were the ones shut down. You know, Pfizer, we have nine new billionaires in the world, but small businesses were shut down. It's, it's been really hard on some members of our community.
I would be supportive of adding another million dollars to the, to the pool for this. And I do like the idea of not just awarding a percentage of the, the need, but kind of having a cap for a total to, to give a little bit more support to some of our smaller businesses.
Well, and I could support that, too. You know, as I say, we, you know, what was that number? And you just mentioned a million, so that'll give us a larger.
2.5.
Yeah, larger pool, and then we'll go from there. So, yeah, today, I support, let's make some of these decisions, you know, in the big picture. This is, this is one of those kind of overhangs. We want to get this project done before I want to pull off other things. You know, that's been my mindset for a few weeks now. So, because once this is done, then we can really start dialing in with the final.
And we can use the 82,000 from the morgue?
There you go.
I was definitely thinking that, yes.
Yeah, like, I was thinking last night.
That'll be just back in the pool, yeah.
Yeah, like, oh, my gosh, truly. Okay.
Well, so, yeah, you want to, should we formalize that in a vote?
We need to, can we have a motion, please?
I, I move a, should I do a total, or should I do a?
You just say an additional?
I move an additional $1 million to support Small Business Assistance ARPA relief from our county ARPA allocation.
And I'll second it.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes.
Well, there you go. That gives a larger number to start with now.
No, that means we have less actually to allocate, because we're at the bottom. So, but anyway, that's, that's really what we should have done.
Yeah.
So thank, thank you. So what we'll do is, when we come back, we will run some scenarios again, based on that higher number, and with the final results of the eligibility analysis that we're doing, once we get to the end. And I expect there'll be another couple of weeks before we can do that. And I, so we'll work with Greg, Greg here to get back on the agenda, to present that to you for a sort of a final determination. I also wanted, as I mentioned the last time, that, and Greg's talked about it, too, that our staffing costs are running a little higher than we expected because of the degree of financials that we are having to pour through to get this analysis done. So one really quick final screen share, which is, so we initially dedicated 35,000 to this process. Our costs to date are approximately 24,000. We estimate approximately 20,000 more. So we are requesting that we would increase, that you would increase the amount that we can bill to the county to do not exceed of 45,000. Obviously, if we come under, we wouldn't bill for 45,000. We just bill our actual costs. But that, that's the, this is our, our findings to date on, on our costs.
Scott, are we going to hand-deliver the checks like we did at the Christmas, or are you planning on mailing them out, or has that been determined?
You know, that's, I think that's up to you guys. The last couple that we've done, we, the last one we did with you, we, we just mailed instead of doing the handout. So, you know, that, we, we can, we can have that conversation, whatever you guys want to do.
Okay, so you're thinking maybe the first of March, we'll have these answers then, as far as going through the last, what is it, 91, 90?
Yeah, I think we, we estimated the end of February to complete this process. So we are expecting to come back at whatever the appropriate time is for one last look from you and determination of things like that final cap number. We'll do the same thing. If we, if you want to employ a cap, then that, that's what we'll do, is we'll try a couple of different ways of employing a cap and bring that back to you for a final determination. determination, and then we're ready to cut checks.
Great.
Great.
So I'll move that $10,000 additional not to exceed number to $45,000 for the administration of this program.
Second.
Any further discussion? Is, is that coming out of ARPA? Are we paying, we are...
Coming out of ARPA.
It's coming out of ARPA, okay, all right.
Thank you, thank you to COIC for doing that very intensive work on this large volume of applications.
You're very welcome. This is why we exist. We're happy to, to support you guys in this, and our community.
The community, very important. Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Take care.
Thank you.
And commissioners, just very briefly, I'd say that after those allocations, we have 2.1 million essentially left in the overall bucket. That includes the 82,000 coming back, being paid for the mobile mortgage by OHA, and then about 2.1 million also still available in the health services bucket as well for health unintended consequences and whatnot. Just a quick update as we go forward.
So Dan, you said 2.1 left in the ARPA bucket, including the 82,000. And then you said health still has 2.1? Was that the same number?
I believe so, mhm.
Was it 2.4 and 2.1, or was it 2.1 and 2.1?
It is 2.1 left in the ARPA bucket, and it is, let's see, 2.159 left in the health bucket right now.
Isn't that how coincidental that those numbers would be the same? Okay, thank you, Dan.
Okay, thank you, commissioners. Up next, Eric Crop will talk about item number three on your sub agenda there, the Health Services Noncore COVID Recovery Temporary Staff.
Did we say what we're doing with the Council on Aging?
We'll circle back, we, he was...
They're just not here yet?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm Eric Crop, Entrum Health Services Director. I would like to talk about the COVID unit in Health Services. And really what we're talking about on, in your packet on page 90, there's a list that says Public Health Response Contingency. In the far right column, you'll see a number of $659,740. That's money that has been set aside by the board for the COVID response. And as, as health has needs, we come in and ask for the, the money is set aside, and then, and then we come with a plan for board approval. And this morning, I would like board approval of $350,000 to continue the, the COVID hotline through the end of March. Currently, the COVID hotline and that, and that team is funded through the third, third week of February. So what we'd like to do is get approval from the board to spend the 350,000, which will fund that group through the end of March. Then, in a couple of weeks, health will come to the board with a bigger plan, or kind of the next phase of the COVID response. We need a little bit more time as we adjust to the state strategy change. As you recall, Nahad has talked to the board about, the state has changed the focus from reducing transmission and containment, which relies predominantly on investigation and tracing strategies towards reducing hospitalization, admissions, and deaths, which focuses on vaccination, testing, wraparound services, treatment, outbreak response, public information, and education. We'd like to have a few more weeks as we adjust to this new strategy, and also as we work through the Omicron wave. So today, we would like board approval of $350,000 of this 659,000. That'll get us at least through the end of March. And then in a couple of weeks, we'll come back with kind of the, the next set of strategies. When we come back in a couple of weeks, what we'd like to do is show the board different service levels, so the board can decide what service levels they would like health to go forward with.
So this is specifically for phone line activity, manning the phones and having the professionals available?
Yeah, this is, this is for the, the call center, but also the support in the community. There's, there's the state OHA COVID hotline, and then there's a county hotline, too, for the wraparound services, and that group also works with containment strategies and things like that.
So it's the team behind the phone call also?
Yes.
Yeah, that, that's what I was wondering, yep.
Yeah, and the 350 comes from, the, the highest cost per week for this team is 70,000. So if you multiply 70,000 by five, that's where the 350, that's kind of, that's being very conservative, that's the, the high end of, of the weekly cost. So it's likely that the 350 will, will fund, you know, a little bit longer than that, but we wanted to be conservative.
Yeah, I like the idea of, you know, just setting that date out in the future, you know, was it seven weeks or so? And, you know, understanding that, yeah, it will, it'll look a little different in a few weeks, and we'll be able to be agile to, to the needs.
Yeah, and Nahad and the COVID team are working on current strategies, and things are, are changing daily. So we'd like to come back in a couple of weeks with, with, you know, with a, with a plan that would move us forward after March 30th.
So I don't quite get it. Are these temporary people that we're paying, and it's now 70,000 a week? Because originally, I thought it was like 42,000, and then it was 52,000, and now we're talking 70,000 a week? Are we, are we having to pay the temps more money? Is that, is that the reason why this is jumping up? So I know our COVID positives are huge, but I also know that a lot of people are now home testing, and they're not reporting their numbers. We were at, what, 42,000? I think about a quarter of our county has had COVID in the last two years. It was at 42,000, the number I got last week from the Health Department. And, you know, knowing that there are people out there that haven't reported, truly, I'm just wondering why this number's jumping up now to 70,000.
Cheryl, can you help me out, please?
Yeah, we use temporary staff in, in a variety of settings. So yes, on the call center, as well as testing events for wraparound services and support. So as numbers and isolation cases increase, we help bring groceries and other things to those who may not otherwise be able to do so. So as the needs change in the community, the temporary staff, the hourly support ebbs and flows. So it does increase, or have increased on average, depending on the week, and also decrease depending on the week and what is going on. So back in July, I believe the average cost was more around 36,000 per week. Right now, we're experiencing about 70,000 per week. I just received the latest invoice, which was 63,000 for the previous week. So you can see how it kind of is fluctuating, and we're moving those temporary staff to whatever area may be in need. And that's what Eric was speaking to with regard to different service levels that we intend to come back to the board with, so that we can have a conversation on, you know, where do we want to make a policy, policy decision of what to, what supports to provide to our community based on the, the money that is available? So is it call center? Is it testing events? Is it wraparound supports? Is it outbreak response? You know, where, where is it, and what are we prioritizing?
Okay, so we just brought in the, what, 670,000 through the FEMA funding, but that's different.
For vaccination outreach.
Exactly, yeah. So for the call center, this is a good example of what we do to try and discern what buckets of money we can use to support what activities. When it comes to the call center, we're tracking the calls by topic. And for those topics that are vaccine-related, we can charge those, that portion to FEMA. So that's what we're doing. And we have to arduously document and go through that. But where we can...
That's gotta be fun.
We support it that way.
Okay. Yeah, Cheryl, that's gotta be very interesting.
And I'm just curious, I mean, Commissioner Dare just asked the question, well, you know, there's a lot of people home testing now, wouldn't that alleviate some of the, the demand? But I could actually imagine it, it could go the other way. The more people who are home testing, testing positive, the more people are calling the hotline from their house and saying, okay, I, you know, if, if you go in to your doctor and you get tested, and you're, you get a positive result, and, and you can discuss that with your doctor, that's one thing. If you took a home test and you find out you're positive, and you're trying to figure out what you're supposed to do, I, I could actually see that potentially increasing the demand for hotline services. Do we, do we have any sense for that? Whether, whether there's people who are calling into the hotline who have not been into a medical facility?
I don't, but that's...
You know, a sense of that, but I can certainly circle back with our call center team and see if they have a sense of what that looks like now with our new processes, with the OHA hotline, like, what information, or who's going to what resource? I can circle back and let you all know.
I mean, they are supposed to report it, so what is that reporting center getting for, for numbers, for the, probably for the state? I don't know if they have it on a county-by-county basis, but, yeah, what kind of numbers are they getting?
Like referrals from the state?
Mhm.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just following the details.
Well, I'll move support of the allocation of $350,000 from Public Health Response Contingency to the end of March for those call center services and wraparound services.
Is there a second?
I'll second. I will also say that I prefer an approach where we're allocating significant blocks of funds to health services so that they can plan for staffing kind of longer term. But, you know, I, I understand that, like, at this moment, we are trying to figure out, we're, we're trying to re, refine our overall strategy based on the new state strategy of, you know, reducing hospitalizations and deaths, as opposed to, you know, exhaustively contact tracing and trying to contain COVID that way. So, but just as a general principle, I, I prefer to be looking out farther, allocating, you know, a, a comfortable amounts of funding, and letting health services focus on doing their work, rather than constantly trying to figure out, like, you know, how are we going to keep these people for another week? Or how am I going to get this limited duration position filled, and things like that?
These are temporary employees, though. Wasn't the bill 63,000 from temporary employees, Cheryl?
Yes.
That you just brought up?
Well, what I'm saying is, is if you, if we provide a little bit more predictability and stability of resources, then it allows you to line up the temporary human resources that you need and know that they're going to be there for the number of weeks or months that you need them.
Well, the good news was, I, I know Dr. Johnson isn't on today, but I believe a couple of weeks ago, he'd projected we were going to go up to 95 in St. Charles, and that number has been dropping. He mentioned last week that it dropped, and it continues to drop. So that's, that's really good to see for our community, because I know there's, what, 5,000 procedures that haven't been done by people? I'm hearing about all kinds of complications where people need to get their surgery done, and it's not, it's, it's, it's really serious that people are not getting into the hospital. So I'm glad that the numbers are going the right way. Commissioner DeBonne?
And we can, and we can allocate resources, like a cushion of resources, and if they're not needed, then they're not needed. But it, in my mind, that is a much better scenario than constantly having to come back and ask for, you know, a little piece more, a little piece more, and have the whole system be very contingent and uncertain for people.
Was that calling for the vote?
Yes, I was.
Yes, so the answer's yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes.
And commissioners, when we come back in a couple of weeks, we're planning on showing different service levels, so for a board policy discussion and decision. So it might be a $70,000 a week version, a $50,000 a week, a 35, and then there would be a discussion, or, or we would show the different service levels for that. Does, would that be helpful to the board?
I think so, you know, definitely. I don't, you know, we see inflation everywhere. You know, you, I worry about, is there going to be food on the, in the grocery shelves if our truckers shut down? Truly, there's a lot of things to worry about, and, and us looking at the money this often, I think is really, I think it's our responsibility. This is taxpayer money that we are spending. Our debt is going up, and, you know, so I, it doesn't bother me, but more detail would be good, Eric. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, so next up, we'll circle back up to the Council on Aging, and Susan Rotella and Steve in Remington will step up here, and I'll let them take it over.
Thank you, Susan and Steve, for joining us.
Thank you for joining us.
You must have been skiing.
Uh-oh.
Yes?
Sure.
Good morning. Good morning for having us. My name's Susan Rotella, and I'm the Executive Director of the Council on Aging. And no, it wasn't a ski accident. I wish it was something exciting, but I fell down a hill that was muddy while hiking with my dog.
Well, that's exciting itself.
Did you home?
What's that?
I said, did he take you home? Did he help you get home? Or did he go for help?
Fire department did.
Oh.
So thank you very much.
The dog didn't take you down.
Well, I hit the mud. It was a downhill slope, and I hit the mud the wrong way, and I pulled, my dog pulled, and the next thing I knew, I heard [makes a sound].
Oh.
And I went, and, and of course, I didn't bring my phone, because it was home charging. So it was quite an interesting experience, but, but the fire department and the police department did great. I'm grateful.
Yes, well, that's an amazing story. That's what happens when you really need your phone, and it's charging somewhere.
Exactly. I think I'm getting the Apple Watch. I've fallen, and I can't get up. Which is perfect, given that we run the Council on Aging. So this has helped me to experience, because I went from crutches to a walker to this, you know, the difficulties that disabled and elder adults have in trying to navigate some of the facilities, including our own, because we walked, I walked out of one of our buildings and had to go across the street, and one of the alleys was just nothing but broken blacktop. And I was doing this all the way through it. So it's, it's been a learning experience, too.
So just a little introduction, you know, I'm supportive of probably what we're going to do here today. So I just wanted to let you know, we were just a couple of weeks ago thinking, okay, well, what's the big picture? What's the status? What's the contracting looking like? So really, that, that was my mindset, and thank you very much for prepping the, the memo here, and just wanted to give you a little bit of, you know, runway here. You know, it wasn't a negative response, it was just like we were asking questions, so.
Great, no, we're...
Thanks for joining us.
Are very, very happy to be here in person and to share both the project and some really wonderful news regarding the status of the project, which I'll, I'll let Stephen talk about. But just to give you a quick update, so this building, you're all familiar with the Bend Community Center and its history, it was the first senior center of Bend. And when we purchased it in 2018, we were in the process of trying to address what we knew from our strategic planning was going to be a significant increase in the number of seniors. So we actually, the timing of getting that building was fortuitous for a few reasons, because a lot of what we did in Bend was being done with our staff at the Bend Senior Center, and they were about to close for their renovation, which turned out much longer. And then, of course, COVID hit in 2020, and it gave us the resources to be able to meet the incredible increased demand. And also, it was the first commercial kitchen we had. So all of our nutrition programs that supported Sisters, Bend, and even La Pine, for Meals on Wheels, were using that building, which we almost didn't have. It was just completely fortuitous that the building became available for sale. It had tremendous deferred maintenance. We immediately went into design process. The process looked, gave us... The process looked, gave us an estimate of about 2.2 million for the rehabilitation of the building. We started on phase one during COVID, when COVID first hit, so we were able to enlarge the kitchen. We were able to provide enough space for our staff to socially distance. And we were also able to triple our community meals for both Sisters and for, for Bend and pivot to a drive-through, which we never would have been able to do if this building hadn't come to pass. So the building, to answer your question, Mr. DeBonne, the building right now, we are in the middle of phase two of three phases. We were, we were approved by the board to continue with phase two, and we had estimated the cost of phase three with SunWest. It was about a million one, and so we thought, okay, we're going to have a while before we're going to, you know, raise that. But I'll let Stephen talk about a wonderful opportunity that just kind of not fell in our lap, that Stephen worked hard for, which allows us to come to you today to talk about capping off the final requirement for the program.
Right.
For the construction project.
So, so that's, any questions so far? So, so the original, the initial request that we made, I think in November, maybe December, that was when we were in phase two. And so we were looking to cap phase two and start, and start into phase three. And, and so about three weeks ago, we, we hosted the JTMF Foundation, and probably you've never heard of that foundation. John and Tammy Merrick were the founders of Consumer Cellular, and they have a particular interest in senior population, and they have parents who are suffering from Alzheimer's and dementia. John Merrick sits on the National Board of the Meals on Wheels of America, and they were interested in our project. So they've pledged, so they agreed to cap off 200,000 approximately, 165,000 for phase two, so that we could finish with that work and then move into phase three. They pledged 700,000 for phase three with the contingency that we raise the final $327,000 so that we can then, and the board has directed us, once that paperwork is in place and we've raised that additional monies for the contingency, we can, we can have SunWest go ahead and start making the actual bids, because as you probably know, most construction companies aren't giving bids any more than a couple of weeks out, and prices keep, keep going up, and supply chain, and we're waiting on doors and windows in phase two. And so, so this creates an urgency to really keep, and, and you probably are also aware that SunWest has recently received the contract for the Deschutes Public Library, among many other contracts. So we love working with them, we want to keep the, the workers going. I think I just learned this morning, the painters have COVID. So it's just, it's just, you know, really a sense of urgency to stay on task with this. So that's, that's what's been fluid about this project, that the initial, you know, ask was, was phase two, and now we're in phase three, and now we see light at the end of the tunnel, and we can go back to really focusing on getting this work done and the impact on the clients, the client services, and, and who the beneficiaries are. And I was going to see if Susan would like to talk a little bit about what those client services are that come out of this building, so you have a better sense of why it's not going to be called the Bend Community Center, why it is a senior services hub, how those services impact Lapine, Redmond, the, all of Deschutes County, as well as the other two counties that we serve.
Stephen, I do have a question for you.
Yes.
So you're asking for 300,000 from us, but you're saying that you need 327,840. So what about that 27,840? If we did that today, would, would that make you guys whole and ready to go ahead?
Absolutely.
I mean, do you have, you don't have somebody out there that's ready to write you another check for that 27,000, do you?
We do not. We do not. But the original ask several months ago was 300, and so that's what made the situation kind of fluid. So yes, in fact, it would, it would make us whole.
Okay, well, I just, you know, if you're here and you've, you've raised all this, what, is it 900,000 from that foundation, the Merrick Foundation?
Right.
I just, you know, that's really, how fortuitous is that for your project and getting things done and, you know, and, and getting construction in this kind of a climate?
Indeed, and I appreciate your willingness to think in those terms.
Well, I just was looking at it going, okay, it's, it is, we just got 82,000 back. How many ways can I spend that today, right?
Oh, boy.
Oh, my God. Anyway, thank you for the story. Susan, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Oh, not at all. So in terms of impact, the services hub, a lot of people look at us and say, are you a services, are you a senior center? We are not a senior center. Senior centers in most of our communities, other than Bend, are volunteer-driven, activity centers, they're membership-driven, and they're really providing an opportunity for interaction and a lack of isolation and loneliness, which is absolutely wonderful. We use many of the senior centers in Central Oregon as partners of ours to deliver Meals on Wheels, so they're subcontractors to us for Meals on Wheels, and in some cases for the community lunches. All of the funding, or I should say, almost 90% of our funding comes from state and federal sources that we, as the Area Agency on Aging for Central Oregon, administer. So all of our services that we provide are developed and implemented and administered through our, if you will, headquarters, organization in Bend. But all of our staff, whether it's case managers, or whether it's a dietitian, or whether it's home care workers, all of that is administered out of the Bend Services Center. Previously, we had just a 1,700 square foot building with no commercial kitchen, and we had 16 employees. That was five years ago when I started. Now we have 26 employees, and we have an 8,750 square foot building with a commercial kitchen that we can do so much more than we could before. Previously, out of Bend, Sisters, and Lapine, the Meals on Wheels were all frozen entrees. Now, for Sisters and for Bend, we've moved completely to hot meals, which if you're a senior and someone's coming to deliver food, it's really nice if you have a hot meal. So we always had a frozen entree, but it also had fresh salads and fresh desserts, et cetera. Now we're able to provide seniors with a hot meal because we have a kitchen and staff that can do it. So we've also tripled our ability to provide community lunches. During COVID, all of our senior centers, as well as our Bend hub, were providing in-person community lunches. But because of COVID, we had to very quickly pivot in all of the sites, including our own new building, to a drive-through, a grab and go. So because of this building, we've been able to triple the number of meals that we've been providing for our clients, especially in Sisters and Bend, and also in Lapine, because Lapine has a fantastic executive director of their senior center, who I think invites everyone in the entire community to come to their community lunches, which, since I pay on a piecemeal basis, is fantastic for her and for our seniors, but kind of kills our budget. But it's been wonderful. Because of COVID, I, I hate to say that there's a bit of a silver lining, but because of COVID, we learned how to quickly end the, this building, pivot to being able to meet what we know to be a growing demand, and also to be able to take all of the caps that we had. We had a limit on the number of Meals on Wheels clients we could take throughout Central Oregon because of our funding. But because of COVID and the ARPA monies and some of the other funding we got from the federal government, all of our caps are off, and everyone who wants and needs a meal will get it from the Council on Aging and our partners. So it's, it's a remarkable opportunity to have gone from such scarcity when I joined as a board member in 2013, and then an ED in 2017, to now see that we have the opportunity to build the infrastructure and staffing and, and property facilities in order to meet what we know is an extraordinarily growing demand of need, both in the population and the financial realities of seniors in our communities.
You mean inflation when you're on a fixed income?
Absolutely.
Even with Social Security going up 5.9%, you know, inflation is way higher than that.
Absolutely. And almost 25% of the people that retire are living solely on Social Security, and it was obviously never meant as a program to completely help people to live through their retirement, especially when retirement was only going to be five or seven years, and now it's closer to 30, if you're lucky. So yes, inflation has hit us hard as well because food prices have skyrocketed, supply chain issues have, have challenged us, not just obviously in construction, but even in, especially in the first few months of COVID, we could, we could not get food. It was, there were so many people competing for it, and the demand was so high and the supply was not yet ramped up.
So it's been a very fluid environment for us, and we've grown, and we're growing both in anticipation of being more flexible, which this building allows us to do, and deliver more services, but also address the growing senior population. Because right now, there's already more, more people over the age of 60 than under the age of 18. We're expecting the senior population to grow to about 30% within the next 10 years, if not sooner. And so we, we're, as we look out and we build our infrastructure to actually be able to, you know, provide more services to a, to a growing group, we, we need to be prepared for that, and that's what this building does. And the urgency, of course, is the, the availabilities of workforce materials, the fact that right now with COVID, since we don't have a lot of people in the building, you know, we're able to get this work done, and, and this is one and done. So we won't, although we have a great relationship with Deschutes County, and we, and we appreciate that we have a service agreement that's about 40,000 a year, that's just ongoing support. And we've also had some, some grants that, discretionary grants that you've been generous with, allow us to address some other issues, and we appreciate that. But this one is a one and done. We wouldn't be coming back for any, any ask relative to this building. We're, we're just seeing the light at the end of the tunnel and really hoping that that feels like the right thing to do.
So you've actually, Susan, you said you've gone from, what, 16 to 26 employees?
Yes.
In this market? What is the secret to doing that? Because so many people are, you know, so short-stopped at this moment, and I know you must treat them like family.
Well, it's been over five years that we made that, that increase. And yes, the past year has been more difficult in recruiting people, and we have had to, especially on the, the lower end positions that we have, like receptionist and, and some of our call center folks, we've had to raise the rates pretty substantially. We went from, I think, paying about $13 an hour for a receptionist to having to go up to around $21. And, and that's a pretty big jump, and, and we're having that happen to other staff members, especially in the kitchen. And there's a lot of people out there that are, you know, searching for a better opportunity, and so it is challenging.
I can comment on that as well. I think we, what we have internally is a community of character. People, most of our people have been impacted by the layers and layers of, of aging issues. And so the people that do gravitate toward us, we do have a somewhat older workforce, and so this is also workers that understand the issues. We did not have a marketing department as of maybe three years ago. We did not have a development department until maybe two years ago. And so we've gone, on the development side, from program income through foundations has increased. We wrote over 50 grants during the 2020 period, and, and it was because of that staffing. And we went from about 200,000 a year in income for program and operations to about 600,000 this year. And so we're taking a deep dive and looking at what it's going to take to keep these operations both stable and sustainable in the environment, while at the same time, again, projecting out to this, this growing population. So, and we work, and we work very closely with Neighbor Impact, with, with the Latino Community Association, with Giving Plate, with other organizations, so that because we're the only organization that's focused on seniors, we, you know, we need to make sure that they're, that they're covered. Some of the services do come, some legal, some, you know, energy assistance, other, other areas that those organizations that we work with are, are covering. But we're the only single organization. Interesting fact, 660 Council on Aging organizations in the United States that disseminate Older Americans Act funding. Our URL is councilonaging.org. We're the only one that owns that. We've been doing this 47 years. So we, I think, have the qualifications to both manage this growth and to, and to plan for sustainable operations as we see this growth.
So I, I'd just like to say, I'm, I'm very supportive of this proposal, and I, I'm glad that we finally are having a chance to, to talk. Noticed, you know, a month or two ago that we had, we had, if you look at our, our ARPA spreadsheet of proposals, we had worked through basically all of the nutritional assistance proposals except this one. For some of the other ARPA investments we made, we, we kind of had a thematic day, so like, we heard all the childcare proposals in one day, but the nutritional proposals kind of came in, we, we, we kind of dealt with one by one throughout the last, you know, six, eight months. So it's really great to, to be able to give some attention to this one. I, I do have, you know, I don't have necessarily questions about the proposal, and I'm supportive of that. I have a couple of kind of bigger system questions that I'm, things that I'm just curious about. So if I, if I understood correctly, your, your business model is really you, you get federal and state funding to do your operations, and your operations are, you know, provide certain services, particularly nutrition services to, to seniors. And this, the, the need that you have is to have, you know, is for capital dollars to, you know, scale up your facilities to be able to deliver those services? Is that basically?
Yes. So we, we had two tracts of funding that we've been pursuing. Since we bought the building, we've been pursuing until COVID hit, and we had to pivot to high, to searching for funding for services. So we had a, a project focus in our development for the capital project. But then we have, since about three years ago when we started development, we have been focused on develop, developing relationships with foundations, govern, governments, and as well as building a major donor program so that we could continue to augment the money that we get from the federal and state government. The monies that we receive are known to be, if you will, starter money. They're never expected to be the full amount it would take to actually meet the demand and the costs of these programs. So we all, area agencies on aging have to go out and raise additional funding, especially those of us who are nonprofits. There are 16 area agencies on aging in Oregon. The largest ones are all part of the county government, so they would be part of Department of Human Services, and where Medicaid is run, these services that we offer are managed through the county departments. But for some reason, 47 years ago, when they created the Council on Aging in Central Oregon, it was determined to keep DHS and the monies that the federal government gives us for the Older Americans Act implementation separate and a nonprofit, which at the time was part of Neighbor Impact. We were together way back at 47. So, so now we are a nonprofit, we have a contract with the state and the federal monies and the state We have a contract with the state and the federal monies and the state monies for programs run through that contract to us, which we administer for all of central Oregon.
One way to look at it is that the actual food cost is maybe $4. Right now, we've boosted that to $5 per meal. And am I on the right track here?
Yeah.
But the actual cost, the actual cost of delivery is more like $8 to $10 a meal. So, that's the portion where we're not going to necessarily get that reimbursed. That portion has to be raised by us, or through a combination of federal and state and local dollars.
So, when we apply for reimbursement, because we're always in arrears, when we apply for reimbursement to the state against our contract, we have to show for each program, say, they give us 75% of Meals on Wheels cost, and we have to go out and raise the other 25%. So, for every $1,000 that we ask for reimbursement for, we have to show that we've raised 250 of it through donations or other foundation grants.
And our contracted sites have to do the same thing.
Yes.
So, Redmond Senior Center, who wants to do a Meals on Wheels program, under the aegis of our Meals on Wheels relationship for central Oregon, they must raise some money too. And we're in discussion with Todd, the new director now, about how can we help them, and so that this looks to those contracted agencies more like a tri-county effort and not like there's some competition between, you know, Bend and Redmond Resources.
Is he going to do some kind of running? I mean, isn't that, I saw him on the news that he was going to do some running, isn't it?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. I was like, that's very clever.
Very creative.
Yes.
Yeah. And, you know, the senior centers, senior centers were very big, like most civic organizations, a couple of decades ago. And they were all, you know, run by volunteers. And it's, the group that runs them have aged over time and it hasn't been replaced by a lot of younger seniors. So, they're challenged in that it's hard to get volunteers to be doing the administrative part of running a senior center. But we do partner with them and provide not just monies for Meals on Wheels, which we give them $5 a meal, and they have to raise, you know, a couple of dollars, whatever their incremental cost is. And we have to do the same thing for Sisters, Bend, and Lapine, where because no one else wants to manage those three nutrition sites, we, as an area agency on aging, have to step in and run them. We have tried to get people in Bend, different organizations, to take on this, but it's a money-losing proposition. The same thing with Lapine. We tried to offer them the opportunity to add running Meals on Wheels to their congregate or community lunch program, but it would just require them to raise even more money. So, it's not a great business model. It's a government model.
Well, it's looking like we're just about got you back on track with the timing.
Oh, thank you, Stephen. We needed that. Thank you.
Yeah, I just had one additional question about that relationship with the senior centers. So, is basically all the food that are nutritional assistance that's being delivered through the senior centers, is that, are you involved in all of that? Or are some of the senior centers doing additional, you know, for their congregate meals, for example? Like, are they doing, did they, is that set up in different ways? Or is they, are they really, are you the bedrock for all of the food work that the senior centers are doing?
If we did not provide, not we, if the federal government did not, through the Older Americans Act, provide money for congregate meals and for Meals on Wheels, or what they call home-delivered meals, the senior centers, and we, of course, would not be able to provide these services at all. But, again, they, government funding, our funding comes from Congress through the allocation process. We're in a continuing resolution now, so they're not raising our money or giving us anything more than they gave us two years ago. And so, our ability to raise the amount we reimburse our partners, or our subcontractors, as some of our senior centers are, is totally dependent upon the amount of money that we can raise on our own, outside of what the federal government gives us. So, they do, so, for instance, Redmond, because they have both congregate and Meals on Wheels that they manage through a contract with us. And we have just moved them from $4 of reimbursement per Meals on Wheels, delivered meal, to $5. And we did that because we're getting more money into our coffers from our development efforts. And they're at the same time trying to raise some money, so that they can not only pay for food, we probably give them enough money to pay for food, but they have to hire staff. And it's all been volunteer in the past, and it's getting, as I said, harder and harder to get volunteers to do paid work, which, jobs that are paid work. So, they're having to hire some people. In fact, in Redmond, they never had an executive director until about two years ago, and I think they've had four. Because, you know, it's just a tremendous amount of work to put on one person who's paid and trying to get the community to support through volunteerism, all the rest of it. We have 400 volunteers throughout central Oregon for our nutrition programs primarily, but also our other programs.
So, I would encourage you, if you have time this week, or, you know, to come by the building and see the work that's being done over there. It's truly tremendous. And we have offices at 373 Greenwood, and then also at the 500 Greenwood space, where we could meet and take you next door to the building and show you just exactly what this money is, you know, buying. And if you don't have any other questions, I'd certainly appreciate your time, and thank you so much.
Thank you so much for joining us. Do we have a motion today?
Well, you mentioned an amount, maybe.
I did. I just thought, oh my gosh, why don't we, I mean, it is always amazing how life is and what works out, and the fact that you had all that funding, and you're coming to us today, and it's, and we're talking about putting another $25,000, $7,000 into, I don't know. I just thought.
I'm just offered, if you want to make that.
Oh, so I can make the motion? Thank you.
No, I just.
Oh, sure, why not? It's always important. And, you know, if I could get my husband on that meal list, that would really help me a lot.
$327,840.
I move that we use ARPA funding in the amount of $325,000, $7,840 to complete their Phase Three project.
Council on Aging.
Yes, for the Council on Aging in Vand, Oregon, at 373 Greenwood and 500 Greenwood. And we will, yes, and we'll pay for our lunch.
Second.
So, this is exactly like I started off. You know, knowing the big picture, understanding that it's a match opportunity, that other fundraising by far has been done for this Phase Three is so exciting. So, what a great conversation today, and it's great to see you. And I'm glad we were able to come up with that number.
So, oh, okay, I made the motion. So, how does the chair vote? Yes. Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And Commissioner Devon?
Yes.
Okay. What an unusual morning.
Thank you so very much. Oh, wonderful. Thank you.
And thanks for sharing your story about your dog.
Oh.
Isn't it dog, pet week?
I have four, by the way.
She has four dogs?
Four dogs.
Oh.
I moved here with two, but then I have friends that run rescues, and somehow I'd foster and fail. So, I'm not allowed to foster anymore, because homeowners don't let us have more than four animals.
So, what kind do you have?
I have a border collie, an Australian shepherd, a cattle dog pit mix, and an all-pit.
She's looking for some livestock.
Okay. Well, I have two Australian shepherds, and I actually wanted to get a corgi, just to have a little balance. And yesterday, I found out that Chad, our solid waste manager, has two corgis, and they are so cute. So, anyway.
They're also herders.
Yes, I know. I know, I want sheep too, but oh, well. It's on the list.
Thank you for, thank you for everything you do to support our senior population in our community.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Chang.
Okay. All right, so.
Okay.
I know we're not done yet. We were almost on time.
We have, next up is number four, the South County Health Center update. And we have on the Zoom, Sharla DeHait and Courtney Ignazito from the Lapine Community Health Center.
Hello, commissioners. Thank you for having us again today. We appreciate that you're taking the time. I'm sorry we're not there in person. We would have loved to, but schedules just didn't work out that we could do that. So, thanks for letting us do it this way today. You should have a presentation in front of you. We sent over some slides, and if those could come up on screen, I'd appreciate it.
It's part of our packet. I don't, well, maybe Sharon.
Oh, it's working. It looks like, yes, there it is.
Oh, look at that, it's like magic.
Sometimes technology works. I also wanted to let you know that Janice Garceau from Deschutes County Mental Behavior Health might also be joining us. I can't tell if she's on or not yet, but that way, if you have questions about working interactively together, then we can have her join in. But on the first screen, where it's called project, so go to the next screen, please. We wanted to give you an idea of our campus and what it looks like now, and then what the new, where the new building would be. So, you can see in blue to the left, that's our existing building. Lapine Community Health Center, out of the $19,000, 380 square feet, we take up about 14,700. So, we're about 75% of that building. It's a one-story building. The new building will be a three-story building to the east of it, so it's on your right. And that, we're going to have a breezeway, so that we can go back and forth to, between the two sites, so that we can have easy access for patients and employees. In the existing site right now, we have served 7,800 people. And I wanted to bring that to your attention, just so you know. The number of people, even though the Lapine community population is small, we reach out to other communities from all three counties, North Lake and Northwest, Northwest Lake County and North Klamath County. And so, in 2021, we saw 7,800 people. It was about 30,000 visits. And so, you can see that we're quite busy. And this will impact so many, thousands of people, not hundreds, but thousands, in being able to offer these additional services. And so, if you go to the next slide, we'll just do a high-level overview again of the services that we're looking at offering. So, dental care, diagnostic imaging, expanded behavioral health, integrated possibly with Deschutes County Mental Behavior Health, specialty care. Of course, we can expand, if we do this, we can expand our primary medical care, because in 2021, we actually grew 10%. So, the number of patients increased from 2020 to 2021 by 10%. And then, the other piece is childcare. This would be primarily for our employees' families. We have lost employees the last two years because of childcare. One employee, a story is that one employee, medical assistant that just had a baby the last few months, is supposed to come back to work. She had childcare planned, and now that has gone away. And so, once again, we might lose an employee that wants to work, because she will not have childcare. And then, of course, we'll continue to look for other partnerships in the county and state services. And then, on that last item, the employee self-care that we talked about before, where we'll have a place that the employees can actually come and relax and enjoy themselves on their breaks and lunches, and being able to have a little bit healthier environment for that downtime. And go ahead and go to the next slide. So, we just gave this timeline to you, so you have an idea. We didn't really present that the last time. And you can look at this in detail, but we're in pre-design now, and we're working on many of the things that are required because of the federal funding that we've already received. And so, that takes some time. And so, we're looking at a start date for construction in February, so basically one year from now, and then hopefully move in in January of 2024. So, those, that's our hope. And so, I'm planning on continuing to move forward, so that we can keep this timeline. And then, the last slide. So, the funding, this is what we have so far, and I want to start out by saying thank you at the last meeting, when you all spoke about getting some federal support. We did reach out that day to our federal and state representatives. And so, we have actually applied for dollars from the lottery bond and then from the general funds. We are in conversation right now with Senator Wyden's office, and we're going to move forward with the other federal conversations regarding other federal funding. That is, might be a little bit more challenging. We found out yesterday that that is primarily for remodels and equipment only. So, we'll see what we can do with that funding. But you see, when you go through this, Lapine Community Health Center, we have reserve funds of $1,500,000 set aside for this project. The federal grant that we've already received, the 582-841. We have a request to the Murdoch Foundation for $500,000, and then the two funds that I just explained for the legislative funding. And then, we were asking from Deschutes County, the $5 million. So, this gives you a good idea, right, what we have thus far. And of course, we continue to look for additional funding, whether it's from private investors or corporations, or again, from state and federal. And next slide. So, this is all that we had, because we gave such a detailed presentation to you before, but I wanted to give you the opportunity to ask any questions that you might have. And if, oh, there's Janice. We can see her now. And so, if you have any questions for Janice also.
I would be very.
Oh, Janice, Sharla was mentioning that at one point in time, I think it was 2014, our behavioral health was actually with Lapine Community Health Center. What happened? I was just wondering, because it's been suggested that we join forces again.
Maybe, as in addition to that request for background, if you could talk a little bit about the current location for behavioral health services in Lapine, and kind of the, whether that's a good space, whether it has issues, whether we need more space as well?
Okay. So, thank you, commissioners. I apologize, because I'll have to tell this as a little bit of a story.
We love stories, Janice.
Okay, so, here you go. Once upon a time, there was recognition that there was a need for behavioral health services in Lapine. And we started, as we often do, with a small footprint, sending some staff to Lapine, who were supervised and overseen out of our main clinic in Bend, and co-locating them in Lapine Community Health Clinic, just to get some behavioral health presence in that community. Very quickly, over a period of, it may have been less than a year, because by the time I arrived in Deschutes County in my role as a program manager in 2015, we had a full clinic operating in Lapine with behavioral health staff located in a building that I believe is owned by the county, and it shares space with the located in a building that I believe is owned by the county, and it shares space with the sheriff's office. Then shortly after that, we, and we continue to collaborate with Lapine Community Health, who also have added, or may have had at the time, this does predate me, behavioral health consultants. They are behavioral health-trained individuals who do short-term interventions, typically take handoffs from primary care providers, meet some immediate behavioral health need, and then often help to transition those folks into what we call specialty care, which is our community mental health, behavioral health care. So we've had this collaboration and movement of clients back and forth for some years. As our clinic grew in Lapine, we also became a certified community behavioral health clinic, which required us to have 20 hours of primary care on-site. That was not a federal rule. That was an Oregon rule. That was hard to meet, because in our smaller rural hubs, it's been difficult for primary care providers to have a business model that works with such a small footprint. So Lapine was an amazing partner, and they placed a primary care provider in our building one day a week. We got a variance. We were able to have that qualify as a CCBHC location. And we operated in that way until the onset of the COVID-19 pandemic. As traffic to the building diminished, Lapine reached out to us and let us know they couldn't make that model work fiscally anymore. They just could not support an in-person provider on-site one day a week. They pulled that person out of the clinic, but we have continued to track our collaboration across locations since, just to see, hey, did this make a difference in our ability to do warm handoffs and get people established in physical healthcare or get primary care patients established in behavioral health care? And we're happy to say that we've kept our volume relatively the same. So that is where we arrive today. What Lapine, what we would, long-term, what we believe, long-term, would be the ideal scenario is that we're able to live together in the same building and have this continuum of care represented in one location, meaning primary care providers on-site, all of the services that go with that when you're working with an FQHC, because that involves lots of additional health interventions, to have behavioral health consultants that, who are employed by Lapine Community Health, and to have our team co-located providing specialty care and able to coordinate care with primary care providers for our clients who often have complex health and substance use disorder needs. That's the story, past, present, and future.
And, and Janice, to what extent can we, can your current, your current facilities, your current space co-located with this, with a sheriff's staff? Like, to what extent can it meet that long-term vision of, of you know, meaningful co-location, providing a continuum of care together? I mean, is it, is it like physically, structurally, physically impossible to do that at that location? Or could we be doing more to work with Lapine Community Health Clinic in that space?
I may not be the best qualified to answer that. I can tell you that we're, and this is true across the board, as you know. We're already probably pushing space capacity in our South County Lapine Behavioral Health Clinic. I doubt we have, I, I, I think it would be physically impossible to provide them two exam rooms, you know, a medical assistant room, and the kind of space they would need to actually make an onsite clinic service fiscally feasible at this point. We will always make space for a healthcare provider, but a healthcare provider really has to come with some ancillary supports to make it work in their model. It's not that different from, from us. We'd have a very difficult time running a behavioral health clinic with, you know, one person and not the other supports needed to do that. So, sorry, that's a long answer.
No.
I don't, nothing is ever impossible, but I think it would be incredibly difficult. And I think Lapine has made it really clear to us, it's a model that just isn't going to work for them financially.
Right. And so where I'm going with this is when Lapine Community Health Clinic originally floated this proposal in our direction, I immediately started wondering whether, you know, the, the immediate consideration is whether we would put some American Rescue Plan funds into this. But long-term, if we are talking about the expanded Lapine Community Health Clinic being a place where we are providing, the county is providing some of its core services, then I think that opens up opportunities for us to look at long-term, you know, our, our, our long-term capital funding sources for projects at the county beyond American Rescue Plan funds, you know, which is the immediate opportunity, and being able to, to, you know, out into the future budget and, and allocate in a, in a committed way, some of, some of our, our capital dollars that, that come out of our general fund or some of our other, other funding sources towards such a project. And so I think what I'm hearing from you is that the idea of, you know, you're offering, you know, being, being meaningfully co-located in a larger space and being able to offer this, this coordination and this continuum of care is a, is a positive from health services perspective.
It's a, it's a positive for the people we serve, bottom line. They will fare better if we co-locate. The, the, the machinations of how we get there are clearly policy decisions that have to be made at the board level. But what I can say is, co-location of physical and behavioral health services, in particular in rural, under-resourced communities, makes for good care for the people in the community. So we want to do, we, meaning behavioral health, we want to do anything we can to help support that project. I think there's some complexities for Lapine Community Health around how they're leveraging funds that may make a capital investment, not necessarily the route that would work. But I will let them speak to that. We think if, if we can get there somehow, this would be a real win for the community.
Good to know.
And I can, I can say that when Lapine Community Health talked to us about whether or not we'd be willing to co-locate, the space they identified is roughly double what we have currently available to us in Lapine. So, you know, it, it certainly would address some space needs for us long-term that we're going to have to address, you know, at some point regardless of where we land.
Janice, how big is their portion of that building where your behavioral health operates now? Do you know? Is it like 2,000 or something?
I think it's 4,600, oh, I wish Chris was here, sorry. I think it was roughly 4,600 square feet that we occupy in Lapine Community Health Clinic. I can text Chris in a moment. And I think Lapine was offering close to 9,000 on the floor that they had identified hoping to land a behavioral health provider in.
Thank you.
The other question, the other question I have, so there's this, there's these really exciting opportunities for synergy between county behavioral health and Lapine Community Health Clinic. Are there similar opportunities for synergies with our public health division? I mean, is, I, I don't have a good sense of, of how we're delivering public health services in, in Lapine and, and from where, and whether they're, you know, maxed out on space, you know, there as well, and whether there's the same kind of potential, you know, you know, like synergy of services, really, opportunities between the public health division and, and Lapine Community Health Clinic. Do you, do you have any sense of that?
You know, I'm really reluctant to speak on behalf of public health. I, I can imagine opportunities for reproductive health and WIC in particular. So any of the public health tranche of services that has direct service footprints in communities probably would benefit from having a location where they can drop in, provide some limited services. But, you know, there's a lot that goes into that that I, I'm just not intimately familiar with. So it would be a good question for public health.
And if I could just address a piece of that. So at our Lapine School-Based Health Center, which is on the high school campus, WIC is there one or two days a week. And then they also are assisting with many of, Deschutes County Public Health is assisting with a few of the programs for the students and for people of the community. And so we, we work closely with different parts of public health when it comes to taking care of our patients and especially our, the children of our community. So public health does have a presence, but they don't have a brick-and-mortar presence. Employees come down as needed, and they use our facilities or the school district's facilities.
That's helpful. Thank you.
Commissioner Adair, the square footage that we currently occupy at Lapine Community or at, at our South County Clinic is 4,300 square feet, so.
You were really close.
Yeah, my memory mostly works.
Very good. I mean, I, I walked in it, you know, I walked in the building, but didn't have it quite down. So thank you for that. So they're actually basically then doubling the amount of square footage that they've talked to you about.
Doubling, yeah, doubling the square footage. And, and, you know, if we ended up able to co-locate with Lapine Community Health, that frees a space that's owned by the county for, to help address other space needs, so.
Yeah, maybe the sheriff needs the rest of that building.
Ideas. Sorry, Commissioner Chang.
Yeah, maybe the sheriff needs the rest of that building, for example. You know, if they're, if they're already on the front side of it or the, the other side of it. Interesting.
I know, Sharla, we mentioned the other day when we were talking to the state legislators about the ask for Lapine. So I see that you actually asked for the 4.1 million. I know I'd said four, and they said, no, that was too much. So I'm glad that you asked for the four, because you, you know, apparently you're talking to the right people, and hopefully rural health truly in Oregon is needed. And, you know, your attention and your, your plans for the community are so important. So I, I'm glad that you're here today.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. Do you have any other questions for us?
So this is a, yeah, I mean, I'll get engaged a little bit. This is a big ask, you know, to Deschutes County to fund, you know, a big percent of this project, 42%. And we're talking about co-locating other operations there. So then it kind of gets back to the concept of the Lapine Community Health Center, the entity itself, referring to the, you know, FQHC and the board that runs it. What does the future look like? And I'm, because it kind of goes down two paths, you know, let's help this great organization do great things. Let's be a service provider and partnership there. So then this capital ask is saying, well, you know, I'm, you know, very high block-level diagram saying, well, the county could help pay for a third of the project, like one of the floors is what I'm trying to say. And then we might utilize about that much also, or however much the footprint it is. So then, you know, we have federal dollars right now, these ARPA dollars, and we have the business case. But, you know, we're mixing up the concept of, you know, what service level are we committed to and what, you know, what the capital ask is from Lapine Community Health Center. It sounds like a great idea, but I mean, I'd like, you know, maybe, you know, Nick Leelak and Eric Crop to kind of digest. And Eric referring to the health administrator, what could that look like? If we provide capital upfront, and then we're the long-term tenant, you know, what's the, what's the lease agreement expected to look like, you know, because there, you know, what's the cost of doing business? And what would we do, do with other southern Deschutes County space that's been built out? Because I know there was a remodel for those behavioral health services, you know, four or five years ago or whatever it was. So, you know, we've made a tenant improvement commitment in our own facility for that behavioral health that has, you know, it's, it's been utilized, and it's our county facility. But then we would be adding the cost of, reoccurring cost of, you know, that partnership. So just the business case, all kinds of questions around it.
And I, if, we are, we are thinking about doing two things. We're, we're thinking about, you know, direct support for the Lapine Community Health Clinic, and we're thinking about now, you know, expanded facilities for the county to be able to provide adequate services in, in South County. And that, that second piece, I really, you know, in my experience, in my one-year-and-a-little-bit experience here, I, you know, I've seen how carefully and deliberately we work with affected departments and our, our facilities department to, to, to assess the needs, to kind of quantify them and understand, you know, what, what kind of facilities our, our staff need, and then, and then come up with a, you know, a capital construction plan to, to, to address that. So I wouldn't want to jump ahead of that process. But I, I guess my recommendation would be that we, we put this on facilities radar to do some analysis and planning around for the, the co-location question. And that we, we make some, you know, like a modest ARPA allocation direct to the project at this point in, you know, so that the more, the more dollars Lapine Community Health Clinic has in hand, the more they can leverage with those dollars from other funders.
Well, the good news is we're dealing with short session. So by March 8th, we're going to have an idea. Honestly, the fact that it's North Klamath County, it's Lake County, we've got, there's a lot of support out in Salem for this project. So that's, that's really good news. But I think we need to do a bit more research. We only have like 1.8 million, a little less than is unallocated at this moment in time. So what is a small token, you know?
And I can say, we definitely spun it up. We got the legislators up to speed. I'm so glad the timing of this came up, because people are talking about it. So, I mean, there's, there's no downside into spinning this up, talking about what the great opportunities are in the future.
And, and I would also say, I will be in Washington DC early next week. And I will, I will make sure to, to take time to discuss with both of our, our senators this, this concept and plum a little bit more on the, the idea of a congressionally designated spending request. Senator Merkley sits on the Appropriations Committee, and so his, his staff oftentimes are more familiar with, you know, specific programs and what, you know, what is and isn't possible within specific programs. But, you know, I, I would still say that I, I, I think that, you know, making some kind of, something like a, you know, a $500,000 commitment from our, our ARPA funds towards this project, I, you know, seems appropriate to me at this point, or we can wait, you know, until the end of the legislative session, which is not that far away, and do that at that point.
Really. I mean, I think this is really important, but it would really be nice to see what they can come up with. And, and know then, and we can have the research done too regarding, you know, what is the building? Can the sheriff's office use that building? If we move 9,000, which would be a third of the building, though we're today being asked for 42% of the funding. So, you know, it's, it's close, but let's see what the state would come up with and, and what we, as a county, what would it be part of our plan?
Well, and I like that idea. Let's, yeah, let's do this, you know, a month from now again, or whenever, with more information about what the possibilities, what the vision is in coordination of the services of the county, and see what the legislature does, and, yeah, Washington DC. So, yeah, there's.
And Sharla, don't forget, I'm also speaking to health council.
There you go.
They're not on the list, but I would hope, considering Central Oregon Health Council, I would hope that we could, they could help us out too, so.
Thank you.
And Nick, can we engage facilities on, on exploring, yeah, space needs both for behavioral health, public health, the sheriff's office?
Yeah, what, what other?
Would they be excited, would they be excited to get the rest of that, the rest of that building? Or, you know, and if it's been remodeled in recent years? Or, you know, and if it's been remodeled in recent years for, you know, to offer specific kinds of, of office space or, or clinical space, you know, is there somebody else in the community? Maybe we could get Christie involved in this as well. You know, if we have, if we have, you know, clinical space to offer, you know, are there people in Lapine who are, are there businesses that would be eager to, to lease that from us?
And then even compare notes with the city itself too, because that's another public entity right across the street from it.
Yeah.
For sure. Okay, so do we have enough direction there for everyone?
Yes.
Thank you so much. Greg, I was looking at the list last night and I noticed that we.
Thank you, Charlotte.
Yes, Charlotte, thank you, thank you. And don't worry, we're not going to stop trying to get this done. The chambers are all on the list. Lapine, Redmond, Redmond Rotary, Sisters Chamber, and the Sisters Rodeo Association. There, so Sisters Rodeo as a nonprofit didn't go to COIC's ask. Do we know they didn't?
I'm not, I don't know that.
Okay, because I know they did talk, they're going to have the rodeo. We've missed two years and it's set up for June, so that's great to know. But I'm just wondering, we do have chambers that did ask for help. Now, is this not legal help out of ARPA funds?
No, Commissioner Adair, I think I can speak to that.
Thank you, Dan.
Yeah, all the chambers did apply, the rural chambers did apply through the COIC process. The way that that process is done, we essentially, they were not applicable at that time, but certainly funding nonprofit chambers is eligible under ARPA. We just may need to look at a different way of funding those. And we can reach out to you and provide an email with some of those, with some of those ways. But under the COIC, small business nonprofit, they weren't eligible based on their total cumulative net profit over the last couple of years.
Okay, so that's why, okay, they're kicked out of COIC. And what happened with the Sisters Rodeo Association? Do you have any feedback on that, Dan?
I do not have any feedback on the Sisters Rodeo Association.
Okay.
They were invited to, to submit an application to the, to the small business nonprofit assistance pool.
Can you just see if, can you find out from Scott if they are in the COIC pool?
Sure.
Thank you.
You can do that today.
Thank you, thank you.
My impression was that the, the first priority of the chambers was to offer the, you know, the grant program to small businesses and, you know, that their, their requests for funds to support that process or to provide additional support services to small business was the sec, a secondary priority. So, I, I do feel like with the offering of that program, the allocation as of today of 2.5 million to that program, that, that we are honoring the highest priorities of the chambers. But if we want to discuss that more, we can, we can.
Well, and that's the same situation. Once we get through the COIC process for the small business allocations, then, you know, those will pop up again. You know, do we want to do something with them or not?
Okay, and Sun River is also on this list too. They asked for pandemic economic impact of 18,325 and then their grant program is listed at 350,000 still on this. So, some of those things seem like they might have been taken care of.
Yeah, so the, as Commissioner Chang mentioned, and I'm sure you've all talked about it as well, the, the small business grant program that the, that the chambers originally asked for was essentially superseded by the process that we're doing with COIC. So, that was where the need was originally discovered and so it's morphed into that. The chambers, although they applied, and what we've talked about is the net impact of the pandemic is what we're really trying to measure in terms of both revenue and expenses. And what we found with, I don't know if I can say all of the chambers, but I can say with more than one of them is that they did have a revenue reduction, but they also had an expense reduction because the funding on their expense side was reduced because their revenue was reduced. So, it was just passed through revenue. That was largely what happened. So, when you look at it on a net basis, there was, they netted out. So, they had a revenue loss and an expense loss that balanced each other out.
Thank you, Greg.
Thank you, Greg.
And Commissioner Adair, I just wanted to say I do have access to the, the businesses and nonprofits that have applied and the Sisters Rodeo Association has applied and they're just, they're in the process right now with COIC.
Okay, good. Glad to know that. So glad that I can get another rodeo poster that will go in my office that will be applicable, right? I know, it's, yeah, it's been pretty sad.
Okay, so Commissioners, just, is there any questions or conversations you want to have on any of the other project items on the list?
Not at the moment.
Okay. So, we have some follow-up actions here that we'll take and it looks like we have at least two or three more meetings in the next six weeks or so that we'll schedule and bring these items back to you. The one last item I wanted to make sure we covered was regarding to TRT and Mr. Doyle suggested that we, we have, we did not ask for signing authority on the TRT grants, similar to how we have done with ARPA. And so, we would ask the board to give the signing authority probably either to Nick or myself to sign those grants as we're issuing them based on your allocation. And right now, that is Mount Bachelor, the Trails Coalition, and Sun River Service District.
So, do you need a motion for that?
We need a motion?
Please.
Motion, please.
Move, well, so either of you or both of you or?
I would say either.
I would.
Move that the county administrator or the CFO have signing authority on, on TRT grants approved by the board.
So, moved.
There you go. And I second that. So, acknowledging that, yeah, as approved by the board, the signing authority is available.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBon?
Yes.
Oh, Greg, I have one additional question. And the chair votes yes. The Opportunity Foundation, they're listed here under Business Support for $456,000. Did we ever hear from them?
Yes, and I'm going to turn it over to Dan. He's been more involved in this one.
Okay.
This is off-co, Dan.
Yes, the Opportunity Foundation is eligible. I don't recall that we have heard from them. We could certainly bring them in here to talk about the great work that they're doing, but I believe it was, and this is off the top of my head, but I believe it was premium pay for individuals working in those Opportunity Foundation shelters. So, if the board is interested in that, we can certainly bring them in or look into it more.
We've actually had a fair amount of conversation back and forth with them on this and I just don't remember where it was left. That's why, Dan, do you remember where it was left in the conversation back and forth with Lou?
I think we, I, I thought we approved it as eligible and essentially if, if there's more conversation, it would, it would probably go towards, to the board at this point is what I believe, but we can check in on that at a later point.
Okay, that sounds good. I do remember somewhere that it was premium, so. All right. Well, we've learned lots of things today. Now, you can get a job for $21 an hour as a receptionist. So, that was pretty enlightening this morning, don't you think?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dan. So, next item, is Laura available? Good morning, Laura.
Commissioners, good morning.
Good morning.
All right, thank you. For the record, Laura Skundrick, Administrative Services. So, we have received a funding request from the Deschutes Cultural Coalition for their Arts and Culture Grant Program. The Coalition is a local funding and cultural support program of the state's Oregon Cultural Trust. As a quick reminder, just about our Deschutes County Arts and Culture Grant Program, for the past five years, the board has provided support for arts and culture programs through video lottery funding. This year, the board initially allocated $25,000 to that program and then during the application review process, added an additional $13,500 to that for a total of $38,500. That funding was awarded to 15 different organizations within Deschutes County. So, with that, I will turn things over to, I believe she's there in the room, Deschutes Cultural Coalition Board Co-Chair, Kate O'Hagan.
Yes, and I believe Eric Sand is with her and he's the treasurer.
Perfect, thank you.
You know, that's exactly right. Thank you very much for seeing us today. Really appreciate your time for dedicating a little more discussion to the arts and of course, very impressive the amount of support that the county has already provided for the arts and culture in this, in this area. As you know, without arts and culture, we're just sort of an empty vessel here and that it, it serves us in so many ways. And I personally come from a background in arts education and working in the healing environment such as the abuse and environment and for people in needs, particularly for youth in, in need. And we'd like to see some of those programs, some of the arts organizations in this area be able to expand, to renew some of their commitment to that kind of social service, service and then also collaboration at a better level with the tourism industry. The Deschutes Cultural Coalition, in my letter that I submitted to you, I summarized basically our history and the Oregon Cultural Trust was founded in, the initial discussions about founding the Oregon Cultural Trust were in 2001. The distribution was decided of funding was given through three different channels. One is to state and tribal, state, county and state tribal organizations. There's 45 of them in, in Oregon. And so, there's a funding stream that goes directly to arts organizations, the major partners like Oregon Arts Commission, Oregon Humanities, Oregon Heritage and Oregon Preservation. And then the county coalitions get an allocation based on just a flat line, per county, per tribe allocation of about $7,000 and then based on population. This last year, we were able to receive over $30,000 from the Oregon Cultural Trust. We also received an infusion of funding from the Oregon Community Foundation who chose to give every coalition in the state some additional funding in response to, to the COVID pandemic. As you can imagine, theaters and art schools and dance schools and music schools and gathering places for the arts were completely shut down. And a lot of money was available, made available for those activities during this COVID response. But the, I just would like to offer that the criteria for it was very, very narrow. You get reimbursed for very specific things that not all organizations applied for. When the Deschutes Cultural Coalition, as one of the 45 statewide coalitions, received about just over a million dollars to redistribute for that, we were still redistributing money in the like 2,000, 3,000, 4,000, 5,000 dollar range. So, when you're talking about an organization that's lost $50,000 during a performance season or $100,000 during a year, it helps, but the criteria is very narrow. And with foundations, their criteria has been narrowed too to working on diversity, equity and inclusion, which is extremely important. They have cut loose some funding for COVID response and for general operating support. So, what I would like to propose, and I'd like Eric also to speak about his, his perspective from the Redmond Chamber and Convention Bureau, is that we focus a little more attention in this county on general operating support for the short term and then longer term, look at strategic planning for capacity building. I serve on a capacity grant review panel for the state, the Oregon Cultural Trust, and I know that a lot of organizations from these east of the Cascade Counties do not, cannot compete with a lot of the larger institutions like the Oregon Symphony and the Oregon Ballet and the Oregon Art Museum. And so often, they just don't, as we would say, "Cut the mustard" at the state level. So, they're, they're allocated back to the county coalitions and then we have a very, very small pool of money. And even we have our criteria. We, since the recession, want to see organizations that are focusing on outreach and offering accessibly priced or free tickets and all of that, which is great, but if you don't have an organization left to offer those, that becomes problematic. The discussion about a lot of the performers, musicians and artists who were also severely affected by the pandemic is, is a different discussion than what I'm, I'm addressing today. What I am addressing is just some more infusion of general funding through the Deschutes Cultural Coalition via the county to sort of match and boost what you've already gratefully dedicated to the arts, just double that for the short term. And then, as I said, with a longer term vision of strategic planning and capacity building, what happens during these events, such as the recession and now the pandemic, is the arts organizations run on a very thin margin, extremely thin margin. And some of them have built up reserves over time and because the funding they receive from donated sources is so restrictive, they can't cut off some funding and put it over into the operating support category or to the savings account. So, when these situations occur, they completely drain their reserves, if they have any. And so, there is nothing really, there's just no cushion. When their rubber tries to meet the road again, their tires, tires are bald or down to the rims. So, that's what I'm proposing to do today is at least in a modest way, see if we can assist the county in infusing the arts with a little more support. Those of us who serve on the Deschutes Cultural Trust have been working as professionals in the field of heritage and humanities and arts and previously forest service and others. They're all professional managers of programs in these fields. So, I feel that we're very, very qualified and have served over 20 years in this capacity to be able to make some wise decisions and to be able to really spot where it's really most needed based on our experience with these organizations. And we are, by the way, in the process of becoming our own nonprofit and diversifying our board. With that, I'd like to invite you.
I have a question for you.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Yes, I'm so sorry, Kate. You, on your heading, on your letter, it says "Fiscally sponsored by the Deschutes Public Library Foundation."
Yes.
So, what kind of funding do they give you?
None.
But they have their name up here.
Yes. When we, as cultural coalitions, can either be their own standalone 501(c)(3) organization or they can be fiscally sponsored by another nonprofit organization and that is the only way that the Oregon Cultural Trust would distribute funding. So, the funding stream that we get through the Oregon Cultural Trust goes through, is a pass-through, run by a nonprofit and then they allocate to us. What we've had experience with over the past couple of years is being a fiscal sponsor requires you to do some work and cut checks and all of that, but you don't, they don't get really compensated more than about 10% admin fee. And so, it just becomes more burden on their staff. So, the Deschutes Cultural Coalition this last year decided that we would become our own 501(c)(3) nonprofit, no longer have to go through the fiscal sponsorship process.
Thank you for that answer. I mean. I mean, interesting. Okay, Eric.
Interesting, awkward.
Well, it's shocking.
And you mentioned Deschutes Cultural Trust. Are there two things here?
There is the Oregon Cultural Trust, which distributes funding to the Deschutes Cultural Coalitions and other coalitions around the state.
Yeah, so there's not another thing called-
We're not, we're not another trust.
Yeah, okay.
It is the coalition.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, we're a coalition. Coalition's strong. And just by the way, before I even allow Eric to say a word, um, I just wanted to, to say that uh we've been pleased over time to distribute money all over the county and are looking forward to getting like more money to the Lapine Parks and Rec as we have in the past. And being able to build the bandwidth ourselves internally as a 501(c)(3) um to do a little more outreach before the grant process. So we can say strategically, um, there is a dearth of services in Lapine and the arts. There's nobody there doing the arts programming that could also assist some of these health programs that you have been discussing. And um, so with that, I'll turn it to you once again.
Eric, there's the stage for you.
Well, I've been involved, gosh, this is, I'm going on my, maybe my 30th year with the chamber. So I've seen a lot of growth in Redmond uh with the Cultural Trust as well. I've been there since that's-
The beginning.
Beginning. Um, and just an example of some of the economic impacts and tourism impacts that arts do to a community. Um, and I've also run a leadership program, which I think you've been involved with. I used to have a class project where you take a co, I'm dating myself now, Kodak moment, or place you take a picture of, go out in Redmond and find that spot. And you can't use the mountains. And the participants would go out and they go, huh, this is, you know, 20 years ago, whatever. There were no moments. Well, now we have our arts in public places project uh in place, which is a commission through the city, our community through the city. And we have spectacular art throughout our community. And as you know, it pictures worth a thousand words. People, our visitors love to come in and they're snapping pictures left and right of Redmond and all of our art. Those pictures then get sent, snapchatted, fit Instagram, Facebooked, and that's drawing interest to our community. So we're, we're seeing that economic impact in our community. We also have a cultural byways brochure, which we created-
10 years ago?
10 years ago.
10 years ago. It's one of our number one selling piece. I mean, people grab, not selling, we're giving away for free, but they grab that because they're interested in the cultural history, heritage um throughout um the region. So that's one of our most sought after pieces. But it's, it's amazing to me to see how, you know, Redmond's growth has been phenomenal over the 30 years that I've been here. We haven't lost our sense of community. And I think that art piece, that component which kind of draws people into loving your community is so important. And what we've seen with the, just that art in public places program through Redmond has just really kind of held us together and bonded us and cemented into loving our community.
Don't forget all your flags.
Oh, absolutely. I mean, there's so many examples I can-
Right. You guys, you really work on your community. I love driving through Redmond so many times when all your flags are up, so.
Supporting the cultural programs and we, gosh, how many did we support this last go around?
About 15.
About 15.
At about the same level that you did monetarily.
Yeah. So it's amazing to see what those groups are doing, um, whether it be a music program for kids, an opera program, um, the High Desert Museum, uh, all those things are making our community stronger and richer for ourselves, but also for those who are visiting our, our area. So it's just, it's, the arts are powerful and people seem to kind of maybe lightly blow them off a little bit. And that's such a mistake because the investment in your own community and your own art, whether, whatever that might be, um, it has, the, the payback is tenfold, so.
I don't know if you've ever been to the original Barnes Museum. They actually moved that art, but there was $6 billion worth of art in 10,000 square feet. Um, it was on, you know, my, I love art so much and I just feel like that was, I think, probably one of the most favorite museums I've ever been in in my life. So, you know, because art does give so much and those are people that, um, you know, they're always giving back. So thank you for representing art today.
Well, the return on investment, I'll just say, for the arts is, is very high because of the number of volunteers.
Yeah.
For one thing, and also they just work on very slim margins. But um, I just wanted to add to your point. I live in Sisters and, you know, there are certain times of the year, before COVID, where the entire city becomes a stage.
Yeah.
Where an entire city, the entire town, really let's be real, um, becomes a gallery of quilts, where an entire city comes together and celebrates. And it brings in thousands of people. The hotels in Redmond, Bend, and in Sisters are packed. So it has an economic uh return.
Our large sculptures are out on the highway, lots of pla, I mean, people, I was driving along, saw that and they, you know, they make a turn. And so it brings people into the community. And that's like one piece and one example of, of what arts and humanities can do for.
Last week, we got a photo next to a beautiful bronze rock chuck.
Absolutely.
And well, so Kate, I think, you know, what comes to mind is you're talking about a little bit of funding uh to help oil the gears of culture. I mean, I'm thinking, you know, you, because you mentioned just that little bit of uh support for people to administrative work, uh, you know, a little bit of breathing room to be able to do the great uh projects or, or presentations or, or concerts, whatever it could be. So I'm, I'm real excited about the request here today. Uh, you know, that live music opportunity, beautiful art can be created, the expression, personal expression when you get to be involved with art. So with, with that excitement, you're asking for $25,000. Uh, and then it's either this fiscal year or next fiscal year is kind of the way the memo is written.
Yes, and the administration of it is something that's up for discussion. What kind of oversight would the county want? Uh, what kind of collaboration can we do? And I'm hoping for some collaboration. We can look at each other's criteria for granting. You know, I think there's, um, what I've heard you say today quite a bit is about leveraging and strategic planning, combining resources, and there's a lot of power in that. And that's exactly what I'd like to see is a little more coming together and thinking together about how to improve what we've got, how to support them so they can survive and in, at first. And that's the step one that I'm proposing we take.
When will you have your 501(c)(3)? Um, have you already applied?
We're, we're in the, yes, we are applying and we have a couple more steps to go. We went on hiatus. I had a little surgery thing. And then, uh, and, um, and then it was the holidays and then we went through our grant round. So during the holidays, which gee, we should be getting back on the nonprofit process. So I would think that our goal is the end of March. And when we're in a certain, uh, at a certain point in the 501(c)(3) application process, uh, you can receive funds and the donors, whoever they are, can receive the tax benefit.
Which, which, we don't, I mean, it doesn't-
Of course you do.
Not relevant to us, but, but, you know, if, if the question is, when will you be a, a legal formal entity?
Yes.
It, it's good to know what your timeline is. I mean, and, but also understanding that if you have a fiscal sponsor, you have fiscal administrative structure and a legal entity to receive funds right now. So that-
Either way.
It doesn't, well, we, that doesn't, uh, in my mind, that doesn't need to affect our, our, our thoughts on timeline for this very much. Um, I, I would love to ask a question. Um, Kate, you mentioned that there are, we have arts organizations that are not necessarily operating at the, at, at quite the level where they can be really competitive in state, statewide grant programs right now. Um, and yeah, maybe not this year, but in, in future years, uh, if we begin a partnership, uh, you could help those organizations build their capacity and, and become those, you know, statewide competitors. Can you just talk a little bit about like what that, what that looks like? What, what does building their capacity look like? What, 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 what would they be able to do uh at the, at the end of that process? Or what would you like to help them build the capacity for?
Mm-hmm. I've thrown around uh strategic planning a lot. And um, it's like having a business plan. If the banking, if the bank ain't gonna buy your business plan, you know, it's the same thing with writing grants. If you, if you don't have a plan, um, if you can't show how, if you don't get full funding, how you're gonna pare it back and do the same job. If you can't, so that, that's, I think, where I would start. And I would propose that the Deschutes Cultural Coalition, it's, it's not the time to do it now, but where I've been heading really in, in discussions with the coalition is let's survey how many people have actual plans, business plans, strategic plans, uh, capacity building plans. And for those who don't, why not? And I can tell you usually why not, is they've got one executive director, a part-time assistant, maybe some contract development help, and a board who's really hands-on, more guild style. So the bandwidth that is required to sit down and write a grant when you're really trying to keep the doors open has been a real burden. But if you start to supply both a carrot and stick, so a requirement but help, and we do have the expertise in this county in spades to help with grant writing. Well, what happens at the state is we have this discussion before every review. We say, now, remember, we can't punish people for not having professional grant writers because you can really tell the difference. But people are scored lowly for not demonstrating that they've thought out their proposal thoroughly. And so you can write all you want about how you need a development officer. Don't we all? Um, but, once that grant goes away, how are you going, how's that development officer supposed to raise the money for the organization that you need and pay for their salary? So there's, it's just like any business. You need to really think through the whole process and timeline uh very thoroughly. And that requires um not always being in a panic.
Thank you.
Carrot, stick.
Oil the gears of culture. That was my comment.
Oil the gears of culture.
With this funding request.
Yes, get them off the rims of their tires.
Oh, yeah, just make it move, make it move smooth.
Another thing is, you know, we've seen so many people stressed out because of work, environment, masks, whatever it might be. I don't know about you, if you came to any of our concerts last summer, our Music on the Green concerts, people just relax. They let go a little bit of their emotions, calm down. It's an amazing uh impact that arts and culture have on people, especially in times of stress. And so, the, the mental, emotional health, um, it all can be contributed back to arts and culture. I mean, it really, there's such a huge key to that. And people tend to forget that. And, oh, it's just a statue, or it's just a concert, or it's just a performance, or it's, it makes your mind calm down and kind of recollect, so.
It's so important. And truly, the last two years have gone on way longer than anyone could have ever imagined. So, yes, whatever you can do, um, people need to get back to living because it's, um, they'll mentally, they'll be so much healthier. I mean, I was reading something about people on prescriptions, how many people are on antidepressants, and people are actually on drugs that were only meant to be on like six weeks or, and they'll be on them for years. And they, you know, everyone needs to like enjoy a concert and then, and then talk to your doctor and figure out, you know, should I really be on all these pills? Thank goodness my doctor took me off a whole bunch of pills.
There you go.
He was like, no, 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 you don't need those. So it's, it's, you know, I think it's really important because you only get to live once and um art and culture are so important.
Well, so the ask is that, you know, the amount of $25,000 and then what funding source. I think we, you know, we do have video lottery fund reserves and we have done our, you know, allocations for the year. Uh, is there other, so Laura can help with this. Is there other kind of arts and cultural, because we already did a, a grant round on this, correct?
I thought we had a balance. Laura?
Yes, so, yes.
Twenty-five.
Thank you. Um, so, yes, we did, uh, for this year, we did already um spend what we had allocated for our internal uh arts and grant uh program. Um, but there is just under 400,000 um available in unallocated video lottery funds currently.
And beyond, beyond those sources, I mean, like, well, um, there is, I, I think you could make a real case for spending uh county unrestricted transient room tax revenue on, on investments like this, um, because we, we've just heard how important arts and culture are to continuing to bring tourists here. Um, so that, that would be another thought um for if not, if not this round, yeah, a future round. Um, and also, as I was, as I was hearing about the Cultural Coalition's kind of long-term vision for building the capacity of arts organizations in our community, um, it, it also seemed to me like this might be a good organization for us to consider um putting on the pathway to becoming a, a long-term service partner. Um, so we could, you know, we, we did a, uh, we invited a couple of or new organizations, a couple of organizations to do a special project request last year. And um, you know, I'd, I'd like to flag that this might be a good opportunity um for a special project request for the, the coming fiscal year.
Well, and yeah, if, with that discussion, I would support a, a video lottery allocation for this fiscal year, uh, knowing that, uh, you know, it looks like you're ready, right? I mean, we don't want to wait another six months after we have this conversation is my thought.
Yeah, who knows who we may lose.
Yeah, there you go. And, uh, yeah, I'm not opposed.
Is that a motion?
I'll move $25,000 allocation from existing video lottery reserves in this fiscal year.
Second.
Any further discussion? Mr. DeBonne?
Yes.
Mr. Chang?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes.
There you go.
So thank you for coming in today.
Yes. Well, great presentation and it's exciting to know that people are ready for it too, right?
Yes.
Live music or any kind of art that's on display or expression opportunities.
Couldn't say it better.
And Laura, can you tell us what the, what the um timeline is for the, you know, the coming fiscal years, uh, uh, um, service partners and special project requests, kind of, uh, applications?
Yes, thank you. So we are currently gathering um all of those materials and are hoping to have those all kind of prepared and submitted by um March and then expect to have that conversation, um, allocation, uh, conversation with you in April.
And if I, if I, I wanted to encourage the, the Cultural Coalition to do a special project request, what would be the, what would be the timeline for that and what would be the, the, what would the process look like?
Uh, well, we, we don't have a formal process, um, really, as last year was really the, kind of the first time um working through those. But I would be happy to work with Kate, um, and maybe uh put together a proposal if that is what the board would like, to have a written proposal.
So yeah, that's kind of an art hour request as a board's.
And is there openness to seeing a proposal? Okay.
As I say, we've made a commitment annually for the, for the uh grant program. This does take it to another level, but I'm supportive. Another thing, uh, uh, Laura, you can remind you, there was the dates of, uh, is it a barbershop quartet event at the Tower Theater? I just remember that. Um, is, uh, it was mentioned in email a little while ago, the dates. They were in a spot where they, we had funded them and then they were trying, they tried to bring in traveling um folks to come in. And they're not gonna have as many people joining them, but so they really wanted to spin it up though and have people attend. I don't know the dates of it.
Yes.
I was just thinking, if you remember.
Remember, Laura?
Um, I do-
Yeah, sorry.
I don't remember the date off the top of my head. It was for the, um, I believe it was the acapella festival.
Right, that's what it was. It was acapella.
Is that the same thing, barbershop and acapella?
No.
Oh, no. I was close, though.
It's music. Yes.
Music without instruments.
Yeah, I mean, the barber, barbershop quartets are acapella, right?
That's my point, yeah.
Oh, but I get a totally different question.
Whatever the data that is, it's coming around. I was just promoting it.
Good, everybody wins.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for joining us. Okay, so now we are on other items?
Uh, could we, well, I was gonna say, take a break before we dive into the next thing, but maybe we're gonna take a lunch break either way.
Or maybe, maybe if we're gonna do executive sessions after other items before executive sessions, we could take a break or?
Yep, either way.
Okay, so it is 10 to 12, so come back, uh, adjourn until 1:00 PM. Does that work?
Yeah.
Okay, 1:00 PM then.
Oh, other items right now though, or? Other items right now, though, or?
Um, no, let's take a break.
We'll have, yeah, we'll have a good afternoon session.
Come back at 1:00.
1:00 PM.
Okay.
Our Board of County Commissioners meeting for the most beautiful December, I'm reading December 9th.
February.
It's February 9th. Yeah, I'm like going, okay. The letter is December 9th. Yes, thank you. So please, we are on other items.
And I know that.
This afternoon, Senator Merkley is holding his Deschutes County Town Hall. If anyone's interested in tuning in, that'll be at 4:30 in the afternoon. I'm going to, I'm going to do his introduction, so. Yeah, and because I agreed to do his introduction, I was invited to the local leaders meeting that's going to happen at 4:00 in advance of that. And if there's anything that my colleagues would like me to discuss with the senator, you can let me know. The local leaders meetings are often quite short, so we don't have time to talk about a ton of things, but.
Yeah, so I was, the invitation for the local leaders meeting was put out to us, so I'll be there at that, also at 4:00. So that'll be a Zoom call before the 4:30.
Okay, and I won't be, I have a prayer commitment.
There you go.
I guess if you're going to attend, I probably shouldn't attend, so.
You can't, that wouldn't create a meeting issue. Because it's his meeting, and it's talking about his legislative.
Okay.
Stuff, so it's similar to when you meet with the legislature in Salem. If you meet with them, that, you know, more than one of you can meet with the legislature on a legislative matter, in essence, it's kind of a form of lobbying, if you will, but it's not directly county business, so.
Good to know.
There's some good Attorney General opinions and carve that out.
Okay. I'll tell them that you've said it's okay.
Well, so then, I mean, that's the same situation we went with the Tuesday morning call, then.
Right.
You know, there's not really.
The morning, I think, that was a little tighter of an issue, because it's Oregon counties, and so you're talking about county issues and from a county's perspective, and so there was a, I think, a little more of an argument could be made that that would need to be noticed if two of you were going to show up.
But, and now I'm just equating the two together, so that's fine, if that's the guidance, we're working with it, we're working.
And there's a level of gray in a lot of this stuff, and what your comfort level is with gray.
I really only like black or white.
It's worked out well. Yeah, no, I don't need to be, I'm not looking for gray either. So, it's all good.
But that meeting is really important, and I know, I was on the meeting this last Tuesday, and it was, there were, you know, because we're dealing with short session, it's really good to hear, I believe there were nine legislators on that call talking about their different bills, so a lot of numbers to get a handle on. So.
Any other other items?
Anything else? So Nick.
My big one.
What?
That was my big one.
Okay, Nick, I think you have a memo for us.
I have a couple of items. One is Commissioner Devon, you had mentioned that you'd like for us to bring back the Lepine Rural Fire Protection District's letter and their email regarding a request for a fireworks ban, for the retail sale and use ban within Deschutes County. I provided a copy of the letter, which they sent to the board on December 9th, 2021. And I guess what I'm still just trying to understand, is it something that they want the county to impose, or is it something that there's a seeking authorization for them to impose it, like other fire, rural fire districts have done across the county? So.
If you read the first paragraph, it said, creating a permanent personal fireworks retail sale and use ban within Deschutes County, so that would be our.
Yeah, so that's my understanding. It was a direct ask countywide ban for fireworks, this is December 9th. Since we received this letter, there's been a little bit of clarity. Lepine Rural Fire 2 did their homework and asked the state fire marshal for clarity on the state statutes, my understanding, and the districts have this authority for themselves. So, you know, that's, and that's why I brought it here, you know, to give the districts clarity. You know, Gary Marshall, the district manager, he's the one that sent me a note after I had talked to him about it, because him and I had crossed paths in Project Wildfire and the history of it, and he said, oh, yep, and he did ask recently, so that was the clarity we got. So, response from our board could be, you have that authority, or, and I wanted to talk with, you know, the fellow commissioners about it, because we may feel differently, because there is an ask for us to do this countywide. And I'm, I'm not supportive of that. I mean, it was pointed out that 20 years ago, the Ben City Council was going to do this, and the community basically thought it was, yeah, the response was totally backwards on this, is my point, you know, it was pointed out, the fact the community's like, you want to do what? And now it's the other way around.
You mean, you don't want to do this?
The city council, there's just, it was pointed out, there was a source article from 20 years ago, saying that, you know, the city council is off the rocker for proposing banning fireworks, and now it's the other way around.
Yeah, I, if, if various jurisdictions are interested in us working towards a countywide ban, I do think that them demonstrating at a more localized level that they support that policy for a couple of years is a, is a good buildup to that. So we, we know that in Sisters, they have a, they have a ban, we know that the C of Bend just passed one. If the Lepine Rural Fire District wants to do this within their district, they can do that. Sun River has done one, and kind of if it reaches a critical mass across the region, then, then maybe it makes sense to do it at the county level, but otherwise, I'd like to let the more localized jurisdictions take the lead on this.
Does this mean that they cannot sell fireworks in the city of Bend? You know, their fireworks booths?
Moving forward.
Not familiar with their ban, but it might be.
Well, no, because I'm thinking last year, didn't they have it? And remember, we actually implemented something, and they were very upset, I mean, they were.
Last year, it was a timing issue, so.
Oh, yeah, because they had set up the tents, and then it.
Right, but if this says.
They just passed the permanent ban a few months ago.
That's right.
Well, we passed, we passed a temporary ban at the same time last year, and it was right after the tents were set up and the supplies showed up. So it was, it was awkward, but it was a very hot, dry moment.
Okay, so we know, okay, so, well, now, really, Redmond is the only one on here that isn't listed with a ban. If they add Lepine, if the, you know, if the fire.
And Deschutes Rural 2, as I say, that was the other jurisdiction talking about this. But yeah, as I say, you know, this is to the three of us as a board, asking us to make a permit countywide, so it's sales, retail sales and use.
And when you say countywide, I mean, you're not including in municipal jurisdictions?
Well.
I'm assuming you're not including fire protection districts either, so it would be the rural county outside of cities and outside of existing fire protection districts? Because they have that authority.
Well, and I'm just referring to the request of the fire board, they're saying, the words they use is, personal fireworks retail sale and use ban within Deschutes County, so that's their ask to us, if we have the authority or not, that's.
I don't know that the county has the authority to reach into the cities and, and the fire protection districts.
The remainder of the county.
When you did your ban last summer, it was the rural county and all the unprotected lands, as I recall.
Well, that helps, so we could always think of it as in coordination with other jurisdictions' bans, so.
I think that's what Ed Keith had talked about last year, when you guys did that, was that there'd be coordinating with the fire protection districts and the municipalities as well, and you did that under an emergency ordinance as well, if you recall.
We really don't.
Temperatures and all that at the time.
What they asked, we don't have the authority to do.
I don't believe you do, I don't believe you can impose, like, say, within the city of Redmond, a fireworks ban, that's within their municipal jurisdiction, and/or the fire protection districts, you know, cover those areas.
As I say, I got as far as the fact that, oh, you have authority to do.
But they can do it, yeah, I provided you an email about a month ago, ORS 480-160 gives them the authority to do that, so they don't need you to do it, they can do it.
And that's as far as I got, you know, oh, you have the authority to do this, so, yeah, so it sounds like two points, content of a letter, response to this, to the board.
I would like to bring it back up, like, April 1st, just, April 1st, if we bring it back up, just, let's see, did we ever, you know, get any major snow, what's the year looking like, and I'm hoping we get more moisture.
We should certainly have, we should certainly be tracking the coming fire season as it's shaping up, definitely, but again, on this particular question, I would encourage the fire district to, you know, pursue a ban within their district, demonstrate that there's, you know, that there's, there's broad support for this across the county, and then, you know, at some point in the future, the county could fill in the, fill in the blank space, essentially.
I'd suggest too, if you're going to bring it back, maybe incorporate Ed Keith into it, he could coordinate with the various fire protection districts and cities, but additionally, that's about the time that you impose your, your no burn regula, resolution, it's pretty much an annual one you do, and it's typically, as I recall, about May, May 15 through October 15, so Ed would be coming to you folks in that timeframe anyway, and this, I think, segues into that pretty well.
Well, I'm still seeing the content of a letter, saying you have the authority to do this within your district, we have the authority to do it in other, you know, adjoining areas, or whatever we want to say, we don't have the authority to do it countywide, so you just made that clarification for me, so I mean, that's a couple of good points that could still be put in a letter right now, and then Commissioner Dare, if, yeah, if we want to, if we haven't get a drop of precipitation from now till beginning of June, that's a conversation to be had, absolutely.
I know, I think we get an average of 33 inches of snow at my house, and I think we've only gotten 12, so, does, we need those other, we need 60 inches, really.
There you go.
At my house, yes.
But, my point is, I'm still supportive of, you know, a letter.
We could do a letter.
Close letter, I mean, we don't, we don't have final.
Letter with clarification and.
That would be good.
We'll bring back a letter for board's consideration on February 23rd.
Okay, thank you.
Got one.
Yes?
Just one more item, so next Tuesday, I'll be in Washington DC with Commissioner Chang also, at the NACO, but the 911 user board meeting is at 10 o'clock, so if you reached in to.
I signed up already.
For that meeting?
Yeah.
Right on, yeah, so.
What an exciting life I'm going to have.
Governing board update is the item number four, and, you know, I just usually explain what's, anything that's going on, you know, not a whole lot of content, but, so there's an agenda moment for, you know, the elected commissioner that's there.
Thank you, I did respond.
Great.
Anything else?
Just NACO, that we are going to go to NACO, so I'll be involved with two items there, the telecommunications and technology committee that I'm officially on, and also I figured out that I'll follow the WIR stuff, so the Western Interstate Region, they have policy meeting and board meeting, like, Saturday and Sunday, and then, you know, from there, I'll be filling in the schedule.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Okay, so.
The next item I have is the Association of Oregon Counties' annual dues for board's consideration, it's the total amount of $63,029.72, and the breakdown is, are the, the general fund dues are $59,896.66, and then the federal land management subcommittee, $3,133.06, so, for board's consideration, and you should, I think commissioners have a copy of the invoice, if you choose to proceed with paying these dues.
Yeah?
I, I think AOC provides incredible value to the counties, and I would be supportive of moving forward with this, I am curious about this federal land management subcommittee, because I'm not, I'm not familiar with it, so.
I haven't done anything with it recently, but it has been kind of the fed, focused on federal, was the concept, remember Jay Sullivan used to be our rep, I don't know if he's there now or not, but it was truly kind of switching modes from state to federal is the, is what that is, and as I say, I haven't done anything with it in a few years.
It was like a 7:00 AM meeting, because I, I used to go to them.
It was a little bit separate.
Yes.
Is it helpful to me to read what's in the summary, or?
Yeah.
What's in the summary is, federal land management subcommittee assessment dues are directed to advocacy on federal land management issues, funds allow AOC to coordinate with other national efforts, obtain professional services, and conduct communications campaigns on federal legislation, dues are based on the county's share of the latest annual national forest receipts payments, or successor safety net payments, in 2022, no dues increase has been assessed.
So this isn't necessarily, this isn't necessarily an active committee of commissioners, this is AOC working on federal lands issues with other organizations nationally on our behalf?
Well, it can be driven by the commissioners, as I say, I got close to it a couple of years ago, and I haven't paid attention recently, it may just be a fund that's not being expended right now, too, for all I know, so it'd be interesting to learn about what's going on right now, but it, there's history, a lot of history in that. And it's, what, $3,000 something dollars?
$3,133 or something.
So, yeah, from my point of view, you know, we're definitely a federal, we're engaged in that area, I haven't brought anything to the table in years, you know, the forest plan, obviously, through the Blues Forest Planning effort that's going on, is the precursor to other forest plans, if they ever happen, and, you know, I'm still, you've got a lot more deep knowledge about that, but I think it matters.
No, it does matter.
More than a precursor, it's the bottleneck to, to moving on to other forest plans, but I can, I can, I'm, I'm fine with it, I can, we, we will have a handful of AOC staff with us next week, and we can, I can get some more background on that particular subcommittee at that point.
Yeah, so I'll move approval of that Association of Oregon County dues for this next, is it?
Is it for '22?
Fiscal year, or whatever the.
2022 AOC invoice, yes.
Okay, thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion, Commissioner DeBon?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And the Chair of all chairs. Thank you, Nick.
Okay, thank you, commissioners, we have a number of other topics, one of the, one of the topics that we would like to discuss with the board, whether it's today, or it's at a subsequent meeting, and whether it's in open session or an executive session, I want to be clear about the difference here in just a moment, but it's the, the growing encampments on Deschutes County-owned property, north of Juniper Ridge, the north Bermsite, east of Redmond, and there may be other properties as well, and the key with this is, they're growing, there's been recent fires, we're hearing concerns from fire districts and fire, fire officials, now, the key is, if we're going to seek direction on, on what or how to proceed, is, in open session, of course, we can discuss this issue generally, broadly, et cetera, if we, if the board prefers to discuss this in executive session, we can only discuss the fire liability issue associated with these camps, Dave and I have discussed this, we've coordinated with Christie, and so it's, or we can, whether the board wants to discuss it today, or at a subsequent meeting, it's, it's your discretion, but I know this is an increasing issue that, that our property manager, Christie Bollinger, is, is facing across the county, so it's really the board's decision on how you wish to proceed, big discussion, narrow, open session, or executive session?
Well, I, I know it's such a problem, because the, all the camps that I visited, they all had burnouts, it's, you know, it's truly a problem, it's why I had said, when we do get our project going, the 10 acre project, that I really felt it was critical to have a sprinkler system around that project, so that you could actually turn it on, and it was tested on a weekly basis, so that fire didn't do an impact to our community across those property lines, I don't know, last year, didn't we do, last year, we did, we did a pilot project with some cleanup, and I know, Christie, you said, well Patty, we could clean up, but they're just going to come in, like, 20 feet away or something, but I know, people did feel good about it, the sheriff kind of met with us 50/50 on that project, and I was listening to the news, I think they were saying it was like $2,000 to move a car, but I don't think we had that experience last year, when we did a partial cleanup China Hut, you know, it was a teeny cleanup.
Yeah, so the, the cleanup you're speaking of at China Hut, the property management was not part of that, because it's not county-owned property, so the sheriff's office, I believe, was instrumental in that, we did two, we did one cleanup last year, it was pretty minor, it was a burned-out RV up in East Redmond, and that was around $6,000, if I recall, and that cleaned up the burned-out RV, got rid of that, and the, the trash around it, but really, that's all.
Was that like on Antler, or was it somewhere else?
It was right off of Antler and 17th.
Because I was cleaning up there a couple of months ago.
Yeah.
And, yeah, there's, there's still a lot of things there, okay.
I would say that, I, I think I would want to discuss this in open session, because the solution to not having fires in unauthorized encampments is to provide the services and provide the, you know, authorized places for people to be, so we don't have as many people in unauthorized encampments on county property, or federal property, or, or other, other places where, you know, where the people are ending up, and, because, you know, we could, we could have a very narrow discussion about, you know, moving people off of, you know, of county property, but unless there is an appropriate place for them to go, and a pathway for them to get out of homelessness, we're just shuffling them around, and they'll end up, you know, the, you know, we might get them off of our property, and they'll end up in, on, in ODOT's clover leaves, or on COID property, or out in the national forest, or whatever, so, I, you know, they, the, in my mind, the solution is to reduce the amount of unauthorized camping overall that's happening in, you know, across the county, so that, that would be my, my pitch, to have a broader discussion in, in open session.
So is there a topic to be discussed today on that, because I don't mind having the conversation, but are we going to open up for a?
Well, we can, if that's.
Yeah.
So I.
I mean, if I could jump in, on the, on the E session piece, it would be very, very limited, and it's, I don't think there's any real downside to discussing that in an open session as well, I mean, as a, as a property owner, if we have a condition on our property that we're aware of, that potentially creates a hazard on an adjacent property, we could have liability, that's true of anybody, not just the government, so.
So that was the.
That's the limited extent.
Right there, yeah.
And it's, we're not really.
Yep.
Sharing any, you know, state secrets by acknowledging that, that's pretty well-known, you know, black letter law, that, you know, you have an obligation as a property owner to make sure conditions on your property that you're aware of, or should be aware of, don't cause problems on other people's properties.
Yep.
What about those 25 flights last year that were diverted from Roberts Field because of the burn that started on our property?
Again, now, that something could create an avenue to, to have a litigation or a claim doesn't mean it's going to be successful, there's a level of foreseeability and some other issues that come into play, but, but, yeah, so.
So then the con, the, the conversation is, Deschutes County lands with people unauthorized camping, what actions there might be, the choices we might have, and then, the liability part of it is always part of it.
And really, what prompted this is the couple fires that broke out on county-owned property, kind of in the north Juniper Ridge area, in the same encampment, and so, you know, this seemed like the timing, you know, right before we're going into fire season, just want to have that conversation, you know, if, if we go in and go through the process to remove that encampment, there's nothing to stop the individuals from going 20, 30 feet, feet away, and, and doing it again, so, we just want to be methodical, and see where the board, you know, what your feeling is on, on, and brainstorm, and what, what options we have.
Well, so one of the thoughts I've, kind of, the conclusion is, it is kind of all about liability, and, you know, kind of the, the pushback that'll happen if a, if a hard line is drawn, you know, if we put a sign up and say, okay, you're not going to be here, and somebody comes back and we really enforce that, you know, that, that's documenting a specific parcel, I agree, if we just ask somebody to leave one location, they don't have somewhere else to go, but we need to draw that line somehow, with a backstop saying, okay, you can't be here, and we're, we're going to set the culture of central Oregon is, please don't just go to the next parcel either, but that's everybody working together, getting on the same page, you know, as I say, culture is, is the key to this, you know, what's the culture of somebody that shows up in central Oregon and says, yeah, I'm, you know, either playing it loose, I'm not sure where I'm going to be next week, so I'm just hanging out, or I'm in hard times, you know, personal choice or not, you know, however they got there, but what's the culture, you know, my goal is to not be here, hopefully, and, you know, moving people on, and having people support each other, too, there's also, you know, the Boise, Martin versus Boise, you know, if there, if we rely on any of that, and we draw a hard line somewhere, it needs to be litigated, it hasn't been litigated, and when you think about it, it's like, oh yeah, there's this thing, it's on paper, that says we can't do this, okay, well, what can't we do, and why can't we do it, well, because of the Martin versus Boise case, okay, well, let's take that and implement it somehow, you know, yes, you can't be here.
On that Martin case, I think there's a lot of confusion on that, that criminal, that says you can't criminalize homelessness, it doesn't say you can't remove people's property that's on your property, that you didn't give them permission to put on your property, it's a totally different issue, you can't criminalize someone being homeless, so if they're sleeping on the sidewalk over there, and there isn't a shelter bed that, available, you can't criminalize that, but if they put their stuff on your property, and you say, you know, you give them appropriate notice to please remove your property, and they don't, you have the right then to treat that as abandoned property and to deal with it, Boise has no real application in that context.
So we have.
They're two different issues, and I think sometimes they get blended together incorrectly, and people assume Boise means I can't make them tear down their encampment, au contraire, you can, that's why you see ODOT doing it all the time, and Boise doesn't get in the way of that, it's, you can't criminalize being homeless.
So then, well, that, and, yeah, so there's two parts to that, too, so then, the legality of the case, and you're saying it's not a limit legally, but then there's the, you know, the threat of civil unrest and pushback, I mean, that's what we're dealing with here, too, and we've seen it a few times, we tried to close that high-speed safety, high-speed entrance to Juniper Ridge for safety purposes, we had protesters, I mean, when we're sitting up here at a policy level, that was not even in our, in my mindset, that we were going to be offending somebody, we thought we were making an entrance safer, and an authorized entrance safer, and there was pushback, so, as I say, if, if we're ready to step into making some decisions, let's do it with our eyes wide open, understanding there's the legal aspect of it, the, kind of the pushback aspect of it, and, we're going to put a line in the sand somewhere, and say, this is where we're not going to allow, so.
In my understanding.
Hopefully that got the conversation started.
Quickly, my understanding, too, is, going back to Commissioner Chang's point, is, if you're going to have them leave publicly-owned property, my understanding is, you, you do have to have an alternate location, you could say you can be here, but you can't be there, that's the other piece of, that's my understanding of that, sort of, the situation, so, as far as like, ODOT, I don't, I don't want to speak. So, as far as like ODOT, I don't, I don't want to speak to them, but my understanding is, if it's, if it's potential public safety issue, like on the cloverleaf, you know, somebody going out of control off of the highway and, you know, jumps the curb and ends up in their encampment, you know, that's, that's a safety issue. So I believe that they are able to remove based on that.
Or a wall of slush in the winter, too, I mean, that's dangerous.
Yeah, so.
And as Dave is clarifying for us, there's also the, the person's body, which you cannot, you know, you cannot force to go, you know, to leave, if there's no other place to go. And then there's their stuff, which I guess, I didn't fully understand that, that basically, you'd be allowed to remove their, all of their belongings. Theoretically, maybe even like, remove all the belongings from around a sleeping person, in, you know, in order to.
Well, you're saying, we can't, well, so there's a clarity point there. You're not a criminal, but you can't be here, is different than, oh, you can just sit there quietly if you'd like, but we're going to remove your belongings. So, I mean, you're already maybe, you're, you're saying it different than I understand it, I just want to make sure we're on the same page.
And do you have to, like, actually put it somewhere and store it for them?
There's certain rules that apply to, you know, making it available, and, and, you know, a certain time window. We went through all that when we posted a year or two ago up in Redmond, if you recall.
Right.
And we, we cleared out a camp or two up there that were on county property, and we had to post it, we coordinated with the sheriff's office, and, and they had to hold some of the material that clearly wasn't trash. They had to hold that for a certain window of time for people to have an opportunity to come claim it. So there's, there's certain requirements in, in that context, but, yeah, the Boise case is more limited to the person, and criminalizing them being homeless, if there isn't somewhere else for them to go. Which is the other piece of it, if there are beds available, you can criminalize them sleeping on the sidewalk. But there has to be available beds, which are essentially, the courts have essentially said are no barrier. So ones that are run by, you know, religious organizations that might require you to be clean or sober, or you can't bring your dog, those beds wouldn't count towards having an available bed, because there's a, some level of a barrier associated with that. So there's a lot of nuance to it, and, and, you know, different jurisdictions are comfortable with a little more of the risk, and others are a little less on the risk. But, but I, you know, and what you folks choose to do in terms of clearing encampments, you know, obviously, that's an issue you may have to deal with. I think that's what Christie's coming forward with today, is, and I know we're working with, I think, ODOT and the city on a joint one here pretty soon, if I'm not mistaken, as well. So, but, yeah, it's, it's a sticky wicket, it's, it's a difficult situation, but.
I know, I was driving down.
Did we get clarity on that item, though?
And there were so many tents in a new spot when I was driving down it the other day. I mean, there was like, someone with a California Volvo station wagon there, parked with a tent right by the river house, like, last summer, but that left pretty fast. But then I was seeing all this other, I'm wondering, how is the Bethlehem Inn doing? You know, they were going to be able to have beds for 88. I know they've run into a few snakes, but does anybody know what their capacity is at this moment?
I don't.
We can find out.
Can we find out, talk to Gwen and say, I know, you know, there are, you know.
They're a high-barrier shelters.
Right, I know.
They're not going to really have an application in the Boise, Martin versus Boise context, because they're a high barrier, so those beds essentially aren't going to be beds you can count.
Besides, besides the legal parsing, I, I just want to return to my point that if we, if we make someone leave county property, but there is no authorized place for them to go, you know, indoor shelter, outdoor shelter, what have you, and there's no pathway for them to go, to, to leave homelessness, then they are just going to end up somewhere else. And, and that might protect us from the liability of a fire starting on our property and burning onto, you know, someone else's property. But it doesn't protect our community from the risk of that fire. And, and so, you know, I, I'm, you know, I, I am concerned about, you know, our legal liability, but, but more importantly, I'm concerned about community wildfire protection. And the only, the only way to get past shuffling people around who are potentially a fire risk in an unauthorized encampment is to give them a pathway out of homelessness and give them authorized places to go. So that's.
Well, I'd love to get clarity on the concept of move a person and their things. I mean, if we put up a sign that says, no camping here, your, your concept was you can't ask that person to leave? And I was thinking, no, that means you leave. You're not a criminal, but you can't be here. So, I mean, that's just an interesting concept, to be clear on.
The, the ODOT model is exactly what Dave said, it's, they, they remove their personal items. And so the North Burn Park that, that I've been communicating with the board, that we're going to do a, kind of a joint cleanup effort, because it's right next to the two canals there, NUID and a COID canal. So there's a major safety issue there when the canals get filled up. So those encampments need, really do need to be removed from the area. So this joint effort would be a 10-day notice to the encampment, also to community partners and to other agencies, just to try to make everybody aware what the intent is. But again, it's to remove the personal property, and then we'll store it for 30 days. And so we're just following ODOT's.
So procedurally, there really is no direct engagement with the person?
Well.
You have to provide notice.
Notices, yeah.
That's typically posted, but if they're there, the deputy.
But the notice doesn't say, you shall leave, it says, we're going to clean up your stuff.
Correct.
So, yeah, I mean, just trying to get clear on what Commissioner Chang was saying.
Well, Revere has stayed pretty clean. I do drive that little loop around every day, and it has stayed clean, shockingly enough, so. I don't know, I just think back to the fire in August of 2020, remember? Burned right up to the Four Seasons RV mobile home, with a lot of people there that, you know, barely were getting out. So I just feel like, thank you, Christie, for bringing this up today. We really, we do have a lot of liability.
So is, yeah, is there a policy that we could help hash out to give direction to these lands right now? Is that what you're asking, too?
More or less, I just, you know, awareness, so there's just, so everybody's aware and we're on the same page, you know. I would love to go in and think that removing one encampment would make a difference, but, you know, we, I was with the sheriff's office last Friday touring East Redmond, and of course, talking just about, you know, the general situation, and they, they shared with me that the encampments in North Juniper Ridge have really exploded. And I think part of the reason, I'm just speculating, but part of the reason is, because it is closer to town, and it's pretty accessible. But, you know, when I was out there last year, it was kind of a tent here, an RV here, now the, now the encampments have just gotten a lot larger.
On county land?
I'm sorry?
On county land.
Yes.
North of Juniper Ridge proper.
Correct.
I know, I couldn't believe it when I took my tour with Deputy Zook that day, and, you know, he's packing 10 gallons of water to somebody, it's September, and it's really hot, and somebody's got a fire going. And he's like, oh, no. And he's, you know, it's, it's kind of like, no, this is not really a good time to start fires, folks, so.
So it doesn't have to be a decision today, we could come back and talk about it, obviously, it's a big topic, and, you know, lot to consider. So I'm happy to schedule another time in the near future, and to come back for further discussion, if that would be your desire.
Is February 23rd, is that a really overbooked day? Do we know? The next meeting that we have will be February 23rd.
February 23rd, yep.
I, I think it's really important.
Full already, or?
We don't have all the agenda items, but we're anticipating it to be a larger agenda, since we don't need to get until then.
But it is an emergency, and as county commissioners, I feel like we need to talk about it in two weeks.
So just, just for clarity, too, then, on the North, North Burn Park property, we are intending on moving forward, just because of the safety concerns with the canals filling up very soon, we just want to get ahead of that, so we are planning to move forward if, if, if we have your support on that.
You have my support.
Yeah, absolutely, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, good, thank you. So we'll come back and we'll continue this conversation, and then we, now we do have a number of items, oh, well, we do have a number of items now for executive session, and I just saw one more come, come in. So with that, it's, it's property and pending litigation, Dave?
Uh, yes.
So do we need both references?
Yeah, well, I can also do the.
Are we going to executive now?
Executive session?
I'm sorry, we just, we have a number of items, when you're ready to go to executive session, we have a number of items for executive session.
Okay.
Are we going into executive session now?
Well, is there anything else you wanted to cover on this, Nick?
Everything else will be executive session that I have.
Okay, good, all right.